All right, Mr. McNeely, are we ready to get started with the study session?
Yes, Chair Burton, it looks like Commissioner Tohe just told us that she was going to sign off to get set up at a different location for the 5:30 hearing. I know Commissioner Hayward will not be joining us. I believe Commissioner Walsh will will not be joining us for study session either. All of the other commissioners, although I'm only seeing a very few of them on the meeting right now, are planning on being here. So when you're ready, we can certainly start your study session.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get started and just jump right into reviewing the next hearing's cases.
Okay, thank you, Chair Burton. And for anyone from the public who's joined us, I'm Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff, and this is the Planning and Zoning Commission's study session for today. The first, the first four items on your study session are public hearing items that we, that have, that have submitted applications that we anticipate coming to you for public hearing next month in your June public hearing. The first one is CUP 2518. That is a conditional use permit for a 150-foot cell tower in industrial zoning, heavy industrial zoning, out on Loop Road in the north northeast portion of Dona Park. Zach Schwartz from our staff is managing that case. I see he's sharing his screen, so go ahead, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is case CUP 25018. It's the Loop Road Wireless Tower. Property owner for this case is Blackheart Logistics from Flagstaff. It's a towing company. Applicant is Tom Johnson out of California. Property is located at 7270 Loop Road in the Dona Park area. And the subject property is 3.2 acres in size. It is located in the heavy industrial zone. And this request is for a conditional use permit for a 150-foot wireless telecommunications facility. So here's an area map. We're on the east side of the Dona Park area. This is Townsend-Wanona Road here. This is Loop Road here. And passing through these residential areas, including Walnut Canyon Meadows here, we have sort of a squared area that is all heavy industrial zoned and it's, there are a lot of heavy industrial uses here. So this is, this is the subject property. It's right off of Loop Road. But there's auto salvage yard here, bulk propane sales here, trust company yard here, solar manufacturer, and the FedEx truck yard. So right south of this is where residential zoning starts. For some details on this, yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Vice Chair Wilson. I'm unable apparently to get into the meeting via the Teams meeting. Has everyone else been successful with that?
It appears like they have, yeah.
Commissioner Wilson, I'll email you an invite again.
Okay, thank you.
And in the meantime, Commissioner Wilson, if you wanted me to share some things when you're able to join, go back a little bit, happy to do that.
Nope, that's all right. I'll listen in until I get a new one. Thanks.
All right. So for the details on this request, it's for a 150-foot monopole wireless telecommunications facility. And so this would include, include some ground equipment and a 6D by 6D lease area. That would be a backup generator and some equipment cabinets. The lease area would be fenced with a six-foot chain link fence. And the tower is designed so that if it were to collapse, that it would collapse on the subject property. This is a site plan, so there's already a driveway off of Loop Road to the subject property. The subject property boundaries are here. And it does trail off a little bit to the west off the screen here. But the, the use would use the existing encroachment to the, to Loop Road, and then a new driveway would come up to the lease area here. So within the lease area, the tower would be pretty centrally located. And on the southern part of the lease area, you'd have the electrical equipment and the backup generator. These are the elevations for the tower, so all the antennas are up at the top. It's a monopole. And this might be a little bit hard to see here, but this is a map of different views of photo simulations that the applicant has submitted. So this is looking at view one. We're north of the tower location. Tower location is here. We're north on a road that is parallel with Loop Road on the west side, looking south through the auto salvage, basically. And this is what the tower would look like here. This is the second view, so this is on the west side of Loop Road, just south of the tower location. And this is what the tower would look like from this location. So the heavy industrial area ends right about here, if you can see my cursor. And so just into what would be the residential area, this is the photo simulation here. And so the tower is actually here. I don't know if you were able to see it or thought it might be a power line, but it shows that it would not be very visible from the very north section of the residential area. The applicant also submitted coverage maps. So the first, the top left-hand side is what's existing for the area. This is where the tower would be located. And then on the bottom right, this is where the tower would be located here. So you can see on the existing map that this, there's definitely a gap of coverage here and poor coverage throughout this area. So the applicant is showing on their coverage maps that they would close that gap with this tower. As far as things for the commission to consider, and these will be analyzed in the staff report, comprehensive plan conformance, so the comprehensive plan does support expansion of wireless service coverage. Zoning ordinance requirements, there are a number of those that'll be analyzed in the staff report. But at this time, all of those appear to be met. Continue to look at those through the analysis and into the staff report. Because the applicant has shown that there is a coverage gap that would be closed or covered by this request, the commission needs to determine whether or not this is the least intrusive means of closing that gap. So the zoning ordinance helps us to determine that. We have a list of preferred facilities and disfavored facilities in the zoning ordinance. And as far as preferred facilities, this ranks sixth out of 10, so one being the most preferred. It's a new tower in an industrial zone between 100 and 175 feet in height. And it actually doesn't rank at all in the disfavored facilities list. I do want to remind the commission that you cannot consider RF emissions because that's the purview of the FCC. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Let's go ahead and move on to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next one is CUP 2519. It is a cottage industry conditional use permit request in the G-zone in Howard Mesa Ranches. Bob is managing this case, and he's already sharing his screen, so go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. Can everyone hear me okay?
Very great.
This is the Guided Wood Cottage Industry 25, CUP 2519. And in this case, the subject property is a 12-acre site in the general zone. The applicant proposes a cottage industry for a place to assemble sandwiches for bicycle rental business that is located at the Grand Canyon National Park. The cottage industry would be conducted in a separate kitchen located within the single-family residence. And I'll show you a floor plan in a minute, so you can get a better idea about what that is. The business would require like one or two deliveries a week from small box trucks. And the business would be conducted entirely within the residence without any activity outside, except for, of course, deliveries, unloading materials and supplies. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is Howard Mesa Ranches up in here. So it's part of Howard Mesa Ranches. It was split from the original 36 acres down to 12. So it's right in the Red Lake area, kind of in the northern Red Lake area. This is a site plan. You can see this single-family right here. This is, this is referred to as a barn dominium. Basically, it's a unit within a larger building. It's a metal building, and it's already been constructed on the site. It's a legal residence, basically. It's, it's gotten, gotten to be popular, but in a nutshell, it's a single-family dwelling, is what it is. And you can see the access coming in. There isn't, there aren't very many developed properties around here. If you go down about, I don't know, three or four lots, you'll run into a residential home and then a few more as you go further south on Blas Station Road. This is a private road within the Howard Mesa Ranches. And if you know this area, this should be a pretty good road. They tend to take pretty good care of their roads. Oh, go back. So this is the floor plan, and as you can see, there's, so this is the unit right here. So you can see it's got two bedrooms. It's got a bathroom, two bathrooms actually, and a full kitchen and a living room. It's basically a full unit. And over here is a kitchen for, this is basically, it appears to be a commercial kitchen. It's got a three-compartment sink. It's got a walk-in cooler. So this is where they would make the sandwiches that would be sent off to the, to the Grand Canyon, to that business they have up there. Over here, you can see storage. You can see probably a garage door where you can get deliveries. And then this is actually outside. This is a covered outdoor parking area. And with that, does the commission have any questions?
All right, looks like Vice Chair Wilson raised his hand first, I believe.
Got to be quick. Mr. Short, I'm just curious, is that kitchen already constructed?
I'm not, I, I believe it is. I'm not, I'm not sure. I know that they did have a building permit for this single-family dwelling. I'm not sure how much is constructed at this point. It could be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Berger?
I had the same question. So we, we know or we don't know?
I, I don't know for sure. I don't know if they've received a complete CBO for this single-family home. But I can definitely, I'll check into that and definitely mention that in the staff report.
Yeah, because if they, if, if they're going cottage, they're going to have a food handler's license? I mean, that would be my secondary question. I assume they do.
Yeah, yeah, they would have to, that would be a requirement from our health department that they get that.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Not seeing any, so let's go on to the next one.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The next one is, the third case is DRO 2503. That's design review for an RV storage yard in Belmont. And Bob is managing this case as well, so go ahead and share your screen when you're ready, Bob.
All right, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. This case is the Darby RV Storage DRO. Okay, so in this case, the applicant proposes an RV storage facility on a 2.17-acre site. And this is in the planned community zone. And just in case the commission doesn't know, in Belmont, the entire, all of Belmont, pretty much, is a planned community zone. And what happened years ago was that different zoning standards were stamped over different areas of Belmont. So it's in the planned community zone, but CH 10,000 standards have been applied. So that means that you look at this just like it is in the CH 10,000 zone. All right, so in this case, RV facilities are permitted by right in this zone. Design review is required because it's a commercial development located in the Belmont Plant Area. So the applicant proposes fencing, landscaping, and signage. They don't propose any new buildings or any lighting. So those are the things that the commission would be looking at as part of this DRO application. This is the subject property. It's in the CH 10,000 zone over here across the south side of Belmont. As you're kind of going out of Belmont, heading back into Flagstaff, right next door is called, it's called Gates Automotive. It's also an RV storage facility. And this is a site plan showing the subject property. You can see they developed this circular driveway coming in and going back out. And right next door, you can see Gates Automotive. Right here on West Route 66. This is a site plan showing the development proposal. You can see this, again, this part's already kind of gravelled in and everything. And then they're proposing all these RV storage spaces off on the side. It would be surrounded by a fence, and part of this, I believe, is surrounded by masonry, maybe over on this side, over on the west side. And then the rest would be a metal fence that I'll show you in a minute. And I believe they might be, they, they are right up against Gates Automotive here. So I'm not, I'd have to look at, see what kind of fencing they're proposing. This is the proposed sign. It's pretty simple, but it is a natural color. And this is the proposed fencing, so it's basically a six-foot metal rusted fence. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Mr. Short, is, is it uncommon to not have any lighting in a storage facility like this? It just seems like that would be counterintuitive to what they would want to have. They've got to have a gate and things like that that require electricity.
It is, it is uncommon. In this case, what they said was that they, they're only open during daylight hours. And that's all, that's, that's all they said. They're not required to have lighting, as far as I know. I'm not aware of any requirement to have lighting. If you have a building, then you have to have lighting at the doorways. But that's what they're saying at this point. In the future, staff is, is allowed by the ordinance to approve lighting. There are certain things staff can approve, but the, what the DRO ordinance basically says, the design review section of the ordinance is that the commission is to approve the initial site, and then staff can approve things like landscaping and lighting later on.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best?
Any sanitary facilities?
They are not proposing any sanitary facilities. This is a pretty simple development. At this point, just drop off your RV and leave, I guess, so.
Don't stay too long.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. Let's go ahead and go to the, the last one.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The last one is ZC 2504. It is a zone change in the Dona Park area from a mixed zoning. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to show this to you all right now. Are you all seeing the, the presentation mode?
Yes.
So yeah, this is Highway 89 self-storage zone change, ZC 2504. The property owner is Juliette Moores. The applicant representative, I believe, with us also, if you have questions, is CDNE, Civil Design Engineering here in Flagstaff, and Isaac Block is their engineer managing this case. The current zoning of this property is mixed zoning. It is CG, Commercial General, on the northern half, and AR Agricultural Residential, two and a half acre minimum on the southern half. The requested zoning is, is, is to make the entire property Commercial General. The site size is 1.87 acres, which is undersized for the AR 2.5. So it has, it has several, several issues with this property, starting with the, with the mixed zoning and being undersized even for the, for the residential zoning portion. This is an image to show you the zoning map in the general vicinity. The subject property is highlighted here. You see where it has a kind of a panhandle that touches the, the Highway 89 A dot right-of-way. You see where the northern half of the property is zone commercial, and it's contiguous with the rest of the commercial zoned, as we call it, Rural Activity Center. So kind of a commercial center in Dona Park, and that center is, is centered on the intersection between Highway 89 and Burris Lane. And many of us who drive this road on a regular basis are familiar with the, with commercial properties in that commercial zoning centered at that intersection. And you see all the other residential zoning surrounding this area. And certainly to the south of subject property, including the southern half of the subject property, is AR two and a half agricultural residential two and a half acre minimum zoning. And you can see the large lots to the southeast of the subject property that are in fact developed with, with homes. When you zoom in with the aerial photograph on, you see the subject property. You do see, and to the northeast, some existing RV storage, and you see the long, thin storage buildings. So the abutting property to the northeast, which is also zoned commercial, is developed with RV storage and self-storage. The subject property, of course, is vacant on the northern half. The southern half was developed with a church building many years ago. The church has been vacant for at least a decade that the county is aware of. And of course, the church is on the, on the residential zone portion. So the property owner, when they wanted to explore adapting the church like for a commercial office use, that just wouldn't be permitted because it's sitting in, it's sitting on the residential zone portion of, of this property, of this mixed zone property. I will also point out Delegowski Drive, which cuts through the middle of the property. And you see the access point over here to Highway 89. Delegowski is in fact a, an easement on Forest Service Road, where, where you see the Green Forest Service. Another interesting thing about this property is the majority of the property is separated from Highway 89 by a sliver of Forest Service land. But of course, the northern portion of the property does in fact touch the Highway 89 right-of-way. So Delegowski Drive has a permit only from, from Highway 89 onto the Forest Service land, where it crosses the subject property. That is not an access easement. There is no actual recorded easement. So that is an informal drive across, essentially trespassing, across the applicant's property, the subject property, and is not legal access. When we look at the next image, this is the applicant's proposed site plan. The applicant demonstrates where there is in fact an existing easement that was recorded many years ago along the northern property line, of course, where the panhandle of the subject property touches Highway 89. This makes sense that it goes directly from the Highway 89 right-of-way onto the subject property, and then makes a 90-degree turn to the south to access the, the nearby residential properties and provide them with access easement. So this is the applicant's site plan drawn by CDNE. And they are showing several long, thin storage buildings on the property. They worked with, with staff on this submittal. And from what we can tell at this point, the, the submittal does in fact meet zoning ordinance requirements. So this is a proposed method to develop the site with a commercial use, if it's, if it's approved for commercial zoning. Any questions so far before I go on to some other points on the existing site, the zoning of the area, and the proposed site plan?
Vice Chair Wilson?
Mr. McNeely, I'm curious, since the access...
Commissioner Leslie, we've got some feedback from you.
You do? Okay. If you could mute. Thank you.
Thanks. I am curious about this access easement and the existing road. So is, the existing road is the current access to the homes on the east of this property. Is that correct?
Where you see the dirt path across the property, it is, it is providing some access. That is not where legal easement is recorded. So easement does not exist there. Easement, in fact, exists along the north side of the property, then bending down to the south to access those properties as the, as the applicant's site plan shows. So currently, yes, residents in the area are rece, are trespassing across the subject property to access their properties. The applicant is proposing resolving this issue by putting the access in the actual legal easement. Does that answer your question, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wilson?
It answers the question, but not really the concern. How many other homes are, are back there that are, are using that? I guess, that are currently trespassing to access their land?
That's your question. I'm pretty sure that, it goes directly to this property, but I believe there's at least one other property that is accessing through that. As those of us who are familiar with, with, with lot-split development, often referred to as wildcat lot-splitting, there are always easements created, legal easements, that, that become private access over, over properties to access other properties. And this entire area, you even see this one flag lot that was created. Often, flag lots such as that are created in order to ensure access. But yeah, the direct access, the direct access would just be to the property to, immediately to the east, and then there are access easements that would branch off of that. So certainly, that is something that is taking place right now. And of course, the applicant is proposing resolving, you know, the, the unpermitted access through an area where there is no easement, and rather relocating it where there is in fact a, an easement reported.
Because I guess the concern would be is that while there is an easement then across the north and going towards the south of this particular lot, is there a corresponding easement on the lot to the east that would allow those other homes to have access?
That's a great question. In all honesty, that's, it's not the, the subject property owner's issue.
Right. I, I understand. I'm just trying to look at the big picture here of what,
Absolutely.
what the implications of this are going to be.
Yeah, that, that actually came up quite a bit in the, the neighborhood meeting that the applicant held. And general consensus was, was certainly that the access has been a quandary for quite some time. Several neighbors discussed at the neighborhood meeting that the church, you know, whichever church, at some point in time, had promised to fix the access where in fact the easement is recorded. It never did so. So, you know, there, there was some input, some concerns with, with the proposed zone change from neighbors, but there was consensus among neighbors that, that the access issue needs to be resolved, and they were in support of getting the access onto where, where legal easement is in fact recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Berger?
So this new easement to, to the north, that would, that would be providing emergency vehicle access as well, right?
Correct.
That would be to the advantage of the neighbors, I will assume, since right now it's a dirt road?
Absolutely. And even where we, where you can see on the aerial photograph, Where you know, where where people have driven typically directly across the subject property. That was not built to county standards. If if the applicant can achieve his own change and pursue development. When they go to permit the building of this road, they will in fact have to build it to the county standard, which includes. Being able to support an emergency services vehicle.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Madam Chair?
I'm not seeing any from any of the commissioners, so let's go ahead and keep on going.
All right. Well, just to summarize, we've we've really already covered the split zoning and undersized lot issue. The fact that this has historically been developed with a non residential structure. So the residential portion was in fact developed and used with a non residential use for many years. And of course, the church has been abandoned for quite a few years. We discussed the the legal access issues. We will point out that the applicant has submitted a traffic generation statement to ADOT. And ADOT has confirmed that their proposed location and where they have an easement. Does in fact meet their requirements and and ADOT would be would be able to issue an encroachment permit. For legal access as proposed on the north end of this site. And as we've mentioned, a neighborhood meeting held, a neighborhood meeting was held on the site. Property owners within a full thousand feet were invited. And of course, there were some mixed response. And if this case moves forward, I'm sure you will hear that. But there was a desire to resolve the access issues. The applicable plans and ordinances that staff will be looking at as we analyze this case. Obviously, the Coquenino County Comprehensive Plan, the goals and policies of that plan. The Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan obviously would apply. And we would point out that the DPTF Area Plan has a design review section, has design standards. This applicant is choosing to pursue a zone change. If they if they pursue a zone change, then they would in the future. Obviously, they cannot be issued a commercial building permit without without design approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they would be coming back for a design review at a future date. The zoning ordinance certainly allows for that. The Flagstaff Regional Plan is the plan that establishes the what we call the Rural Activity Centers, the commercial areas. And of course, the DPTF Area Plan echoes the Activity Centers and discusses zone changes within the designated Activity Centers. Zoning ordinance does in fact address setbacks and buffers, including landscaping and screening walls and fences. Between commercial properties and residential properties. So the zoning ordinance standards will be analyzed. And of course, the zoning ordinance regulates landscaping, has landscaping requirements, signage requirements for if and when a signed permit is sought. And of course, lighting standards that we're all familiar with for for when outdoor lighting permits are sought. And of course, outdoor lighting permits are required for all outdoor lighting. The county's EDCM Engineering Design and Construction Manual. Obviously, is the is the regulation that regulates grading and drainage permits. So the applicant has already submitted a preliminary grading and drainage plan. That that meets the county's requirements for preliminary plans, but they will have to get a final grading and drainage permit. If they move forward with construction to demonstrate how development at their site isn't negatively influencing their neighbors with drainage. And of course, ADOT issues the encroachment permit. Any other questions on this zone change request?
I'm not seeing any. So if we're done with the cases, let's go to Community Development Department update.
Okay. So Chair Burton, on the on the department update, that is all of our long range activities. And that will include both Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan update. And we'll give a summary of the retreat that that you all held earlier this month. And update to the county's comprehensive plan, what we call In Vision twenty forty five. So Melissa Shaw, our long range planner with our staff, will be discussing those items with you and I believe has a presentation for you as well. So go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, Jess. Would you mind sharing the the screen to show the agenda on the for the regional plan update portion?
Oh, I am sorry. I thought I was sharing that again. There we go.
Great, thanks. And if you could just enlarge it a bit, that would be.
Absolutely. There we go.
Terrific. Okay, well, thank you and good afternoon, commissioners. It's. Wow, well, it's been now almost five weeks since the retreat. And May is a long month, so that was on early on in on on May second. With the joint retreat with the City of Flagstaff and it was a well attended session. Most of you were there and there were quite a few comments and exercises. In brief, I what I what I wanted to give you an update on about that was. There were a number of comments regarding the Future Growth Illustration. And the there was one correction that was made to the map. It was actually a mapping error. And then the within the county portion of the Future Growth Illustration. So that those edits are being made. And then there are also changes being made based on your comments to the. To the text of the plan, but primarily to the character descriptions and the minimum. Density ranges that generated quite a bit of discussion during that meeting. So just to let you know that those revisions are underway. The the City of Flagstaff does plan to schedule public hearings on the regional plan. First with the Planning and Zoning Commission and then with the City Council in September and October, so coming right up. And then with that, they are still looking at the May of twenty twenty six ballot initiative. The public hearings with Coquenino County, we are anticipating scheduling public hearings for the regional plan. After the county's comprehensive plan process is concluded. So the public hearings and adoption with the comprehensive plan. We just figured that it would be better for the public, better for commissioners and supervisors. Not to try to either leapfrog or squeeze those public hearings in one right after another. So we don't have an exact date yet, but we'll get closer to that once we talk more about the the comprehensive plan. So thank you to all of you who who showed up and spent the entire day at that session. It's I we feel like we got really useful and constructive feedback. So I just I'll pause there to ask if any of you had any follow up questions or comments to that. And I would I have not received as a copy of the minutes. But there were city, the city clerk did take extensive minutes of that meeting.
Commissioner Best.
Well, first of all, thank you for separating the two plans as far as what we will see, because that will help a lot. A few days before. Our session on May second. We got a document with about two hundred changes. And I doubt any of us had time to go through all those. At least I didn't. Let me speak for speak for myself. Certainly, what's. The next iteration of the plan is going to be substantially different than what we saw. With those changes and the others that you're mentioning. Are we going to have a time to enough time to review it? Because I kind of feel personally like I'm starting all over again with it. And so I certainly would like another shot at it. Before it gets close to when we're going to see it, either before city P and Z or or county P and Z.
Commissioner Best, thank you. That's a great point and an excellent question. I have not had a specific conversation with city staff about. The plan for when that will be rolled out or what the actual. You know, review schedule be, it might be that the Region Plan Committee reconvenes to look at some of the changes. But again, I haven't had that specific conversation with city staff. It is it is something that we are also thinking about because I agree with you. If there are major changes over what you saw May second. Then that would be really important to bring that back to your attention. So that's something that we will we'll we'll follow up with you about that.
And I just let me say that I do appreciate. The fact that there was a very significant response from. City staff in making the changes. But I feel like it's a whole new document. I I don't know. I don't know. But when you when you change two hundred things, most of two hundred things, which is what we saw in the document we got on. May first or whenever, that's quite significant. So I appreciate the changes and I'd love to see them as soon as as possible. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify more about what those changes were, I I think what you're referring to are the changes based on the sixty day review comments. And there were a lot of changes, but a an updated document wasn't given to the commission or the supervisors or the council. Prior to the retreat. So and then that combined with the changes from the retreat is something that we. I do want to make sure that we have time, if we can spend time with you, to make sure that those are understood.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any of their hands, Melissa.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you all for for joining us. On that on that Friday afternoon, Friday morning and afternoon. So the day went fast, but it was good. Well, and that just does lead into the the next segue about the comprehensive plan update. And I know you all are excited about the sixty day review period starting, which started on last Monday, the nineteenth. There was a flyer in your packet. That had a lot of details about how. The public and other reviewers can get a hold of the document and make comments. So sixty days starting May nineteenth, it will conclude on July eighteenth. And I will talk a little bit more detail about all those opportunities to review that plan. But I do have a presentation, so if you give me a second, I'll share a screen. And so one thing that we're hoping to do during the sixty day review we we have this month and then next month. Is to do a bit of a deep dive with with the commission into. Primarily the goals and policies of the updated plan so that you're familiar with that. And then we can certainly schedule a separate additional. Maybe longer study sessions prior to public hearings to make sure that this is something that you're you're well aware of in terms of the content, the organization. And any of the changes between our current twenty fifteen plan and this new update. And again, just to remind everyone here about the scope of the plan and what it covers. It covers the entire geography of Coquenino County. And although the county is big and has, it does have a lot of different communities and land ownership. Elements to it. And so when you look at this entire county, that nearly twelve million acres, it's twelve percent of that. That's private land that this plan actually applies to. And just sort of kind of go back a little bit about when we started. We started this process with a scoping workshop. That was back in January of twenty twenty three. And then after that, we 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 took those comments from the scoping workshop and it got organized, started. To put together the public participation plan. And then started to do our outreach. And I think you you might remember that one of the things we did was we had a countywide survey conducted by. Global Local Vision, which is a local surveying company. And they they helped to not just narrow down, but also confirm what we've been hearing. Across the county during the focus groups that had gone on. And some of the the main issues that came out of that survey. Issues that the community felt are important for the plan to address would be managing growth. Drought and water availability along with that. Infrastructure development, which which includes public roads. And then housing, this this chart says affordable housing, but it's all kinds of housing that is an issue for communities across the county. Wildfires and flooding, that is something that. Is is clearly an issue that has come up again and again and will continue to be. And then finally, cost of living. There was a long list of of other issues that that added up to the one hundred percent. But these were the top that I wanted to show you. This on the right right hand side, what this this other chart displays is some of the more nuanced issues that came up during the focus groups. And they they're certainly something that would be. Understood by the community wide survey, but they're something that's a little bit more detailed and we wanted to make sure we communicate. Because when we talked to communities, it became clear that communities as far away as Fredonia, White Sage, Forest Lakes and everywhere in between. Valley, Red Lake, out at High Baptist State West. Almost universally, all of the communities asked for a way to communicate, to connect with each other, with the county. And so community connections, community hubs, and then resiliency centers. Is something that came up as a need in our different rural communities. We heard a lot about impacts from tourism and this is an interesting bit of a conundrum there. Because tourism provides so much of an economic base for the county. But also local residents feel that impact from traffic. From everything from traffic to. Litter to just overuse of resources to trespass those kinds of things. So it is something, there's a balance there. And the the, I guess, the theme that's come out of this was something that we're calling respectful tourism. And you'll see goals and policies that address that in this plan update. The next one is support for small businesses and local businesses. This is not new to the plan, but it's something that we continuously hear and understand as far as. The economic development efforts of the county would really benefit people by focusing on that type of support for local and small businesses. And then again, the next one is not new, but it is an ongoing hope, I guess, if you will. That rural outlying communities would would love to have access to rural transit. As you know, from many years of this being an identified need, funding is an issue. And it's expensive to run rural transit. We don't have a lot of options, but it's worth keeping. An eye on that as a future goal and exploring options to to, I think importantly, partnership. With other communities and some of the incorporated areas. I just, we did learn recently that up in Page. Through the agreements that they have, they're getting income from the parking lot at Horseshoe Bend. They will be having a trolley service that will be taking right visitors from the Horseshoe Bend back into Page, the city of Page. So there are options to partner with different. You know, the incorporated communities as well as other agencies to perhaps explore rural transit options. Digital access, that is all about broadband. And bringing in broadband service to those unserved or underserved areas in the county. So people have that digital access to either get, you know, get further education, to run businesses and just to communicate in general. And then the last concept is. For lack of a better term, there might be a better term, economic resilience that that is such that provides opportunities where all generations are supported. And give those those. A variety of generations, opportunities to stay in the county. We've we've heard this idea that one of the concerns is the export of. Of younger generations because people have to leave in order to find opportunities to live and work. And so they leave the county, even though they may not want to leave the county, they may not want to leave their families. So that's something that is, again, not really a new idea, but it did come up in a lot of the discussions. Particularly with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. The next slide I have just talks more about the sixty day review and this is the flyer that you received in your packet. We are holding open houses and we've already had three open houses. Last night, we were out at Cromer Elementary School in Donnie Park. And we began with an open house last week out at Pond. Um, and we began with an open house uh last week out at Pondros Fire Station in Belmont. The next two will be uh at Fort Valley Lodge on June 16th, which is up Snowball Roll Road. And then June 26th will be at the Tuba City Library. Um, the, um, the hours are listed here. So the, the meeting at Tuba City Library is in the afternoon. Those are the library hours. They close at four o'clock. If anyone's planning on going there, keep in mind they're on daylight savings time. So they're an hour ahead of where we are here. And then finally, we'll have a webinar for people to jump in and uh hear remotely. A presentation uh that mirrors pretty much the open house and that will be in July, just before the, the 60 day review concludes. We, we do have the document uh posted online and uh for direct review and comment, we have uh print copies in all of the libraries throughout the county. If somebody wants to go and review a print copy. And then, of course, we're always available to meet with a community or a group that wants to learn more about the plan. So I'll just pause here for a second if there are any questions about the 60 day review before we get into a little bit more of the details about the updated plan.
Commissioner Best.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Melissa, could we go back to the first panel? And uh it, it's so interesting that you kind of uh corrected yourself when you talked about housing. And um, I think this has been a challenge for us for honestly decades. Uh, the regional plan glossary has a definition of housing that's in three parts. Attainable is a market-based. Affordable is somehow supported in a way that it costs no more than 30% of the median income. An employee is related to a business. And um, my first question is, are we, uh, do we have the same glossary entry? And I think it would be good to resolve that early on in this process so that when we're talking about housing, which is absolutely critical, you know, economic resilience. Uh, that last element there is really about housing, most in my opinion. Um, if you can't afford to live here, then you can't afford to live here. Um, and I think it's, it's what's primarily driving the regional plan. So I, I hope that we can get a definition and I, I would suggest if it's not already that we just follow the regional plan. So when we're talking about housing, we know exactly what we're talking about.
Commissioner Best, to answer your question, absolutely. We, we do mirror the uh glossary definitions of the regional plan for attainable, affordable and accessible housing. The reason why affordable housing is used in this chart is because that's how it came in from the community survey. Um, you know, when people were asked a question about an issue, people cited affordable housing. That is what you're big bringing up is a nuance in terms of different types of housing. So yeah, absolutely. The plan does distinguish between those different types.
Yeah, the, the trick is that affordable housing now has a technical definition.
Exactly. It does. And it, it has for years. And you're right, it is the 30% of the median income is quote unquote for affordable.
So when we go and talk to people in these, in these sessions, um, how exactly would we want to describe housing or have them describe it? Would we want to say affordable attainable housing or uh o- open, open?
I will, I will.
It's kind of confusing. Uh, affordable housing has a specific meaning. It's only 30% and it has to be supported by somebody. And it's going to be a very small part of the housing market. Um, and so we want attainable housing to be low enough price to support all generations. And some affordable housing uh as much as we can, but especially in the county, I, I don't think we do that, do we?
I'm going to show you, this is, do you see a different screen now? Do you see a document?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a little bit of, we're getting a little bit ahead, but I'm going to go ahead and show you um. This is, these are the goals and policies from the resilient economies and housing chapter. So we've renamed this chapter to highlight housing. And you can see that one of the goals is that the, for the future of the county is that a wide range of housing choices is available to all county residents. And I'll get into this a little bit more as far as how this, uh what these implementation strategies mean. But the first implementation strategy, this is a bit of a spoiler again, you're, you're getting me ahead of myself here, but I'll, let's, let's jump in. So you can see this is the implementation plan. The number one um action item, if you will, of the implementation plan is to conduct a house, a countywide housing needs assessment. So that's where the details would um, would be understood about housing needs in the county. But we'll, we'll talk more on that in a second. I hope that answers your question for now.
We're saying something about maybe instead of a, in this list here on the left, say uh housing availability.
Oops. Um, yeah, I can, you know, I see, I hear what you're saying. I can change that title. I'm a little bit hesitant because that is exactly how the community survey, which is statistically valid, identified it, but I'll change that because I think, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, well, I, uh, I understand the importance of housing and, and I don't mean to sound uh pushy about it, but I think when we're talking about it, we need to know exactly what we're talking about, uh because it's a I think maybe the biggest issue that we face in the city and a huge one in the county. Uh, so now I will be quiet. Thank you so much.
No need to be quiet. That's why we're talking. Thank you. Um, okay. So just going on then, any other questions about the 60 day review? Okay, I'll move on then. This next slide, and I think we've shared this image with you. Um, the reason why I wanted to talk about it again today is to um, to talk about the coordination that went on to create the comprehensive plan, the draft. And this shows that the comprehensive plan does hover uh kind of above everything else, directing that flying saucer, if you will. Uh, the amendments to the plan, as you know, are area plans, the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, and then also um, we don't mention this a lot, but the Joint Land Use Study is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And then also the comprehensive plan does direct the um subdivision and zoning ordinance orbit, if you will. And then the, the less direct uh relationship though are these other plans and regulations that are done in collaboration with community development and the conference plan. You can, so you can see there's a long list of different types of plans from the Strategic Broadband Initiative, the Facilities Master Plan, Economic Development Planning, um Health and Human Services Planning, Emergency Operations. All of these departments were involved in the, the writing and the drafting of the comprehensive plan. So um, just wanting to um take time to nod, give a nod to everyone who contributed to this and that they have been looking at this as, as the process has evolved. So the next slide, this um just talks a bit and may not be as interesting as, as we think it is, but it talks about, you know, what are some of the new pieces of the comprehensive plan in terms of content and organization? And I'll just start with organization first on the right side. So we're, we're organizing the plan into three main sections that share common value and vision. So I'll show you that on the next slide. And then the goals and policies are now organized so that they're at the end of each chapter and instead of throughout each chapter. So you can see them all at once. And I'm going to go ahead and just say that we will create that desktop guide again. So you will have that in your hand, a uh a Cliff Notes version, if you will, of all the goals and policies in one place without needing to flip through numerous chapters to take a look at them. Uh, something though that is new uh with the goals and policies, and I'll show you an example in a second, is that where it, we felt it was needed, where a goal or policy needed additional context or description, we've added that background information uh as a paragraph after the goal or policy. And then in addition, we have um added the implementation plan action item number where it's associated with the goals or, or policy listed um right with that. So then you can jump right to the implementation plan and see uh what the proposed action item is to get that implemented. Um, some more, what we're calling is organizational changes. There are some very detailed appendices. One is called an existing conditions analysis. And when you open that, you'll see um for instance, the analysis that went behind doing projections for the um, the water demand in the county. You'll see um the detailed information on scenic roadways, scenic and historic roadways. You'll see a list of threatened and endangered species. So information that we felt was important to keep with the plan, but not to include in one of the chapters. Um, and then finally, we have, we'll have um uh the communities of Coconino County um uh as a table. And then those are linked, hyperlinked to the community assessment reports that we put together. They're kind of a mini um no, I won't even say comprehensive plan, but just a mini report about the, the communities that we put together when we started to do the outreach. So it gives just demographic information. Some very basic, but um fairly detailed information about each community that most of the communities within Coconino County. So you can open something like the valley community session report, see what in 2020 the population was. Um, some of the information in terms of community services, things like that. And then um also with that, we have a link to the focus groups notes and then the focus group summary report. So um, lots of detail in the appendices. And then um thinking about the content changes, as we just talked a bit about briefly, um, there's a whole new section in the resilient economies and housing chapter that the current plan did not have in it. We have put together um, and this is actually required by um Arizona by statutes that the county uh put together projections on water demand based on the uh, the growth in the next 20 years. So we've got those projections in the water resources chapter. Um, we've updated all of the maps and created several new ones. And one that I'll show next is what we're calling an existing land use pattern. And it was something that we worked with the uh assessor's office on to understand how much of the private land in the county is actually used for um different land uses, including ranching. So we'll talk about that in a second. Um, as I mentioned, we have a lot of detailed background information for the communities of Coconino County. So you can look at most of the communities in the county and get a little snapshot on, in terms of uh who lives there, what it's like, what services are provided. And then finally, that prioritized um implementation plan that's cross-reference to the goals and policies. So this is uh, this is a slide that shows you the um, the existing uh land use pattern map that I just talked about. And um I could pull it up as an image, but if you can see the orange color, so everything is, all the colors are, are merged. So all of the green indicates federal land, including park service and forest service. The kind of buff tan color is, is highlighting where the indigenous nations of tribal lands are. Everything else, the colors, the yellow and the orange, those are private parcels and it's too far out to actually zoom in and see what we're calling the employment area land uses, uh because we have to zoom in. We do have some zoomed in images in the plan where you can see, for instance, in Donnie Park Timberline, where those employment areas, those commercial areas are, where in Valley, where in uh Kachina Village, Muntz Park, those places. But what's interesting, when you kind of step back and do this, the squint test on this map, you can see the orange is private land. And it's what the assessor has coded as ranch use. Now, um, a lot of these are also G-zoned. They will have a, a residential home on them. But just it gives us, it gives us a sense of how much land in the county, at least as of earlier this year, the early part of 2025 was still used for um ranching. And um, this was something that we felt was actually important because it characterizes the rural nature of the county and what's going on. And then the checkerboard pieces, because as you know, most of you know where it shows the checkerboard pattern that is intermixed with uh generally state land and where ranchers have leases on those lands. So um, yeah, this was something that we thought was, was informative for this update um to really uh exemplify the rural nature of the county. Uh, the next slide is about the table contents and the organization and the three main sections that we are proposing to group this plan into. So there is an uh background and process section. But then we jump right into the, what we're calling the quality of rural lifestyle. And that has the chapters for land use, growth and development, circulation, transportation, resilient economies and housing, stewards of the natural environment, which is natural environment, parks, open space, trails, recreation, water resources, and sustainability, resilience, energy and climate. And then finally, diverse communities and services, which is a chapter on community services and public safety and diverse cultures and community character. Um, a few changes from the current uh plan. Right now, communities, services and public safety are two different chapters in the comprehensive plan. There's so much overlap between them. Although this is a long chapter, there's a lot you can really see um at a read. Then, you know, what all these services are, including public safety. So it seemed to fit together in a logical manner. And then we have the implementation plan, the glossary, and then finally the appendices. So again, these different, these three sections, rural lifestyle and natural environment and diverse communities and services, those all came out of the focus group work, the outreach that we did, and then also the survey work. So um, the next three slides, and I won't spend, I won't go through all this in extreme detail, but I did want to show the value and the vision because each of these sections has their own value and vision, if you will. Although some of the vision statements um apply across all of the themes. Because the last one, for instance, here, all cultures are valued, respected and preserved. That is a universally held um vision for all of the different sections of the plan. But for the rural lifestyle, the value that was driving a lot of the update was we value a vi- vibrant county economy and diverse accessible housing options that support integrity and sustainability of our rural community lifestyle. And then you can see the vision talks about um how to support the rural lifestyle. Visitors are invited, but tourism is managed responsibility, responsibly, and then valuing cultures. And then the diverse communities and services. So remember, this includes public safety. Um, we are inclusive and respect and honor the diversity of our communities, people, land and cultures through vibrant communities connected with partnerships and countywide services. And then we get into some specifics on the vision, which really does drive into infrastructure, emergency services and public safety. And how to make sure that those are as much as possible uh maintained in partnership with county communities and that are universally available to our, our communities. And then finally, the natural environment, a simple value statement, we are stewards of the land and natural environment. And the kind of three-part vision here would, would be open space, trails, public lands. And recreation facilities are connected and accessible to residents and visitors. The natural environment, resources and ecosystems are resilient, protected, connected and sustainably managed. And again, valuing and respecting cultures. The next slide I have, and we're, we're almost at the end. We are happy to answer any questions um or go back to anything. This is um just kind of an introduction to the goals and policies. And just to summarize, the current plan has 66 goals um and 386 policies. So that's a lot of those are a lot of policies that you all look at every time you're, you're evaluating a um, a case, whether it's a conditional use permit, subdivision or rezoning. The updated plan currently, again, this is 60 day review, so that this number will likely change. Um, currently there are 58 goals. Um, currently there are 58 goals and 179 policies. So in keeping. With what we heard during this, the scoping work. It is somewhat streamlined. We're hoping to streamline it even further, but this was a good start. And, um, there was redundancy and, and hopefully that they are, um. They are robust and really informative as far as. Moving this plan ahead to the, for the next 20 years. And the. Um, this image below is just an example of the, the goal, the first goal in land use, maintain the county's varied cultures. Rural character and resilient lifestyle as a goal. And then the implements, and the implementation strategy. That is tied to that. And then additional details on really what that goal means. Now, not every goal or policy. Has goal details, but. Where we felt that it warranted, uh, elaborate, uh, more elaboration. Then we provided some more details on that. And I will just. Pause here, I'm going to pull that document back over. Um, because these are actually the. Displays that we're using for the open house. And you can see. Here then, um, for land use, growth and development. We can see the different goals. And the policies nested under it with the implementation strategy where it's identified. These, um, charts do not have those goal or policy details because there simply wasn't enough space. Um, to display them, but they are in the plan online. And then. You can see for each of the. Chapters, we have these, these lined up. So I just wanted to show, share these with you. Then what we're hoping is to. Give you all time to familiarize yourself with these goals and policies and. And potential changes that, uh, that we've made from. Existing. There's not a lot of significant change. Uh, there are some new goals. Uh, related to, for instance, the housing one that we looked at. But for the most part, there is, uh, still a. Strong desire to maintain the county's rural lifestyle. And the rural character with, um, different options for doing that. And then just going down to, um, just a brief introduction to that implementation plan. Um, the implementation plan currently has 50 action items that were identified. During the process and they're grouped into high, medium. Low and ongoing programs. So again, we looked at this briefly a second ago. Um, the first, um, action item, high priority action item. Was to conduct a countywide housing needs assessment that would inform a housing plan. To address housing needs and to recommend, um, housing solutions. Um, and so there actually is in the. Um, appendices. A rough outline, if you will, of what that housing plan could, could use as a start, because this is something that. We, um, would need to be done separately from the comprehensive plan update, but it was identified. In the implementation plan as the, one of, one of the highest priority action items. And then you can see again, the reference to the goal or policy that it implements and then. And then there's a who implements that. So bringing. The implementation plan back over here. We can take a look at that. And you can start to see that it's grouped into the high. Um. Valued options. And there is a timeline here. So high priority action items. Are anticipated to be initiated within one to two years of plan adoption. And again, that depends on. Board direction as well as funding, where funding is needed for a particular. Um, action item. And then it goes down into the medium priority action items. The low priority action items, and then the ongoing programs where they're continuously implemented. And so, um, what's next for the comprehensive plan? Well, these are just some images of the advisory group. Um, again, the 60-day review will conclude July 18th. That's a Friday. We will look at the comments. We'll analyze the comments. We may. Reconvene the advisory group and, um, to discuss any needed changes. And we are hoping then to schedule public hearings starting in September of this year. And so, um, one more fun slide to share. We, as the 60-day review is going on, we are also working with a designer to have the plan. Um, layout completed. So by the time it goes to pu- public hearings, the technical editing. And then the final design work and layout will, will be accomplished and we'll have that ready to go with public hearing. So. Uh, this is actually the front cover. That we, uh, have come up with so far. So I'm even going to pause here and. And I'll open it up to all of you for any questions or comments.
Commissioner Best?
Uh, thank you. You know, looking at that map, um. Of all the jurisdictions, I, I was.
This one?
Yeah. Are, are we explicitly? Uh, trying to. Communicate, um, in some organizational way with other jurisdictions. To bring. Uh. Bring us all together. I was thinking, you know, you were talking about the checkerboard and the grazing. Well. Pretty much all the green is grazing too. The forest service land and, uh.
And park service.
Yeah. I mean, there, there's so, uh, there's so much overlap of fire. Issues, for instance, and, um, the ecology plan and animal ecology. I, I wonder if we are, um. Coming together in an organizational way enough. Um, one, one challenge that I personally. Been a little involved with is the San Francisco Peaks weed management area, which is. Is trying to, uh, address invasive plants. Uh, generally around San Francisco Peaks, obviously, but. Pretty much every jurisdiction is involved. And we in fact have not successfully carried it forward. It's been dormant for some years. Um. And so I just wonder, um. Have you thought of that? And how do we bring jurisdictions together?
I guess there are several answers to that. The, um, that is. We have worked with what we call our partner agency advisory group. Throughout this planning process. And so it is not, was not just, um, county departments that helped put this together, but. We did work with our partner agencies in. Developing the goals and policies of the plan. And then just kind of a more technical, um, answer to that is that is. Uh, one of the reasons why the 60-day review period is actually required. By statute is so we notify all of the. Agencies about the plan update and then, uh, make sure that they have a chance to look at this again during the 60-day review period. So. Uh, notice, formal notice has gone out to all of those partner agencies. Again, with, with the, uh, link to the plan and the ability to comment. So. There are, um, also in the implementation plan, there are, there are numerous. Um, implementation action items. I'll just pull that back over. And, you know, this is something that I am. Happy to share with all of you so you can start to read these. And, you know, give yourself some time to become familiar with. With the plan before it goes to public hearing. Um, but so just for instance, on. Number 15, collaborate with fire districts and native nations to complete a countywide rural community wire wildfire protection plan. So just for example, I know this is actually going on now. It's, it's under, it's going, it's underway. Um, but we. We have a number of implementation. Items identified to do that collaborative, collaborative work.
Well, that's great that we have the, uh, partner agency advisory group. I wonder. And of course. I can make this suggestion in the review, but. I wonder if that could, uh. Keep going after the document is completed, uh, and approved. So that we bring them in on a regular basis, um. And see where our, our shared goals could be shared opportunities. Thank you.
Commissioner Best, this is Jess with staff. I, I would encourage you, um, talk with, um. Our force, the county forest restoration director, uh, Jay Smith, and then, um. Flood control district. They actually, uh, do cross jur- cross jurisdictional work constantly with our partners. Uh, probably the majority of that work takes place on, you know, combinations of federal and state. And, um. Uh, in tribal and of course, private land. So. Um, that, yeah, so, some of that does take place. Um, you know, our department's a little more focused on, on permitting. Um, uh, development on private land. Um, but tho- those bigger picture efforts do take place. And, um, as you saw where Melissa showed in. The hierarchy of plans, you know, where their operations are, are connected to. Um, and inform the comprehensive plan and likewise, uh, but yeah, tho- those are some of the, those are some of the. Um, agencies within the greater county organization that truly do that work that I believe you're referring to.
Okay, thanks very much. And I, I really, I, I made a copy, a hard copy of the pile of donuts here. It's very useful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
All right, I'm not seeing anything. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Mr. McNeely, uh, board of supervisors update?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Burton. Um, are, of course, you all saw the board of supervisors. At your May 2nd, um. Uh, joint retreat with the, uh, with the city folks. Um, on the Flystaff Regional Plan Update. And the next, um. The next time we will be getting together with the board of supervisors will be on June 10th. We will be giving you, them a work session on the comprehensive plan update. Um, very similar to what Melissa just gave you now. So, um, that will be at 1:15 on June 10th. And you all are certainly invited to, um, uh, to join the board. Um, the board, uh, is anticipated to approve. The, the budget, um, in late June, and then they take a July break. So we do anticipate some zone changes. Um, going to, uh, forwarded recommendations from you all as the planning and zoning commission. Going to the board of supervisors in August when, um. When the board reconvenes after their July break. Any questions about board activity?
Commissioner Best, I'm guessing you just forgot to lower your hand. Okay.
That would never happen. Uh, I, I do have a question. What, what time is that on June 10th, did you say?
Uh, Commissioner Best, that will be at 1:15 on June 10th in the board chambers downtown.
And can we also see it online?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Certainly you'll be able to see it online.
Thank you. Okay, is that all for, oh?
That's it. Uh, just, uh, just roundtable, uh, Chair Burton.
Hey, uh, Ms. Shaw, you raised your hand?
I, I thank you. I did have a question. Um. And that was. As far, that was in, um, regarding the June 10th. Presentation to the board, which as Jess mentioned. We're planning on being very similar as to what we just gave to you. So if any of you have any comments or suggestions. For what you think the board might want more detail on, that would be really helpful. Um, because again, they. They have, um, pretty much. June. And then they go on break and then we'll try to get with them in another work session before we have public hearings, but. We do want to spend time with them to get them familiar with the. The content and all the goals and policies of the plan as well. So if you have any suggestions for how you think that might be. Um, modified or better suited to the board, just either. Share with me now or send me an email. That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Uh, if we're to roundtable here, I have a quick subject to discuss.
Yes.
Bring up. Um. I know that, um, Commissioner Ruggles recently departed our commission. And he served honorably for many, many years. I was wondering if there isn't some way. That we as a commission can recognize his service. Either in the meeting or with some type of, uh. Of a. Recognition from maybe the, uh, board of supervisors.
Absolutely. Um, great comment, uh, Vice Chair Wilson. And the board has already indicated that they would like to honor, um. Uh, former commissioner, Commissioner Ruggles, John Ruggles. By the way, we saw him last night. At the open house at Cromer, Cromer Elementary, the open house for the comp plan update. Um, but yes, they would like to, and I have asked him when he would be available. So we will keep you informed of that. We, we would anticipate. Uh, August would be the earliest for that. Um, and then, um, and of course, in honoring John. Uh, he, he was recognized as a distinguished, uh, citizen planner statewide. Um, so always worth mentioning. Um, and we will be looking to obviously replace him in District Five. So in, if any of you commissioners are aware of someone in District Five. Who you, um, think would make a great planning and zoning commissioner, uh, please let us know, let me know. And, um, and we are in the process of working with supervisor Lena Fowler, um, to, uh, to fill that seat. I hesitate to say replace.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I would like to give us a couple minutes stretch before the 5:30 start. So. Let's go ahead and, uh, take a quick, like three and a half minute break. Mr. McNeely, it's 5:30. Is staff ready?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yes, uh, staff is ready to hold your, um, your 5:30 PM. Public hearing.
Okay. All right, it's 5:30. Let's get started. Um, all right, we'll start with meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the May 28th, 2025 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information. Please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address the case. Please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be respectful. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subplot. Subdivision plat approval are referred to the board of supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the board of supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact the community development office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. We ask that you please mute your speakers and turn off your cameras. Additionally, the message function of this platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It is not for case discussion. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. All right, the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. McNeely, will you please lead us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, all right. And I would like to remind the public to please turn your cameras off at this time. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So if there's no modifications that need to be made, I will entertain a motion to approve the April 30th, 2025 minutes. And I'll speak at once.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the. April 25th, 2025 minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by, um, Commissioner Berger and a second by Commissioner Best. All right. Let's make sure everybody's here. Are we missing any before I do a roll call here?
Tammy, that, that motion was Commissioner Williams.
Oh, was it Commissioner Williams? Okay.
But that's okay. You, Tammy can, or Tina can have it.
There you go.
All right, um, let me do a quick check to make sure everybody's. All right, um, let me do a quick check to make sure everybody's here. So we have Commissioner Best, we have uh Vice Chair Wilson. Do we have Ro-? Yeah, we have Rose. Okay, so I think the only person that we're missing is Hayward. Okay. Uh, go around the room, uh, Commissioner Tohe.
Uh, is it roll call or is it um the minutes?
It's 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 the minutes.
Okay, aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
I I'm standing, I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Burger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie.
Aye.
This is Chair Burton. I also, uh, uh, minutes passed. All right, the third item on the agenda is the call to the public for anything, any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Not seeing any. All right, uh, let's see. Next, we are going into our public hearing portion of the evening. So first up is uh case CUP dash 25 dash 13. RV is a permanent residence on an acre in Red Lake. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Sophie Kozza, our newest staff member, will be presenting this item. So go ahead, Sophie.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Can you guys see my screen okay?
See it perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so this is on CUP 25013, Tuscana RV as a residence. And the owner and applicant is Julian Tuscana out of Buckeye, Arizona. The subject property is located at 5742 Wilshire Drive in Red Lake. And the zoning is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum. And the request again is to use an RV as a permanent residence on a one acre parcel in the AR1 zone. So for the RV as a permanent res- residence, waste would be taken to a dump station or managed by a subscription service. Until a wastewater system is built. Power would be provided by an accessory structure or an RV pedestal. And the wheels would be paneled, and then water would be hauled or delivered. So this is the vicinity map. The subject property is highlighted in blue. And it is in the Red Lake area plan. And the parcel is just east of Highway 64, surrounded by more AR zoning. And then this is an aerial photo of the subject property. You can see North Wilshire Drive here and a lot of vegetation on the property. And this is the site plan overlay, that aerial view. So you can see the road access coming off of North Wilshire Drive with a shed and a carport, and then the RV is just south of that. And this is a photo of the site, again, off of North Wilshire Drive. So for their citizen participation plan, neighbors were notified within a 300. Foot radius of the subject property and a virtual meeting was held on March 18th to discuss the request. Three neighbors participated and were fine with the request, so long as it not be used as a short term rental, which is not permitted. And staff then received two comments regarding this case. So the first one was from Colton Good, received on May 21st. And concerns were raised regarding code enforcement issues, including waste management, environmental impact, noise. Development standards, and then also impact on neighborhood character. And then an additional comment was received earlier today, which raised concerns about fire safety and lack of permanent infrastructure. So as far as long range plan compliance goes, the county comprehensive plan supports affordable housing and a variety of housing types. And while this property does fall within the Red Lake area plan, the Red Lake area plan does not mention anything applicable to this case. And these are the findings of facts for a CUP. More information can be found in the staff report. And for staff analysis, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. So with that, I will leave it open for questions.
Vice Chair Wilson.
I'm curious, um, does this fall under one of the items that we could put in a consent, this and the next item, um, 007 into a consent agenda?
We uh, we decided not to do that with these two because there were actual public comments and opposition to it. So we felt it was important to actually uh go through each one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask the question, the picture that we had shown by staff, when was that picture taken? Do we have a rough idea on that? Because it showed the trailer already on spot. Uh, I, number seven. Do we know when that was was taken?
Well, this would have been taken when the, probably when the zoning notice was posted.
Yeah, Commissioner Leslie, uh, that that photograph would have been taken um just a few weeks ago. Uh, you know, we we have to post within 15 days prior to the hearing, but not more than 30 days prior to the hearing. So usually the first week of the month, we we post these sites. Um, I obviously um. An RV to park your RV on your property is is perfectly legal. And many people get temporary use permits to be using their RV uh to be camping in their RV essentially. Before applying for the conditional use permit uh for to use the RV as a permanent residence. Any other questions on that?
Um, yeah, just one more follow up. I I did, in fact, today do a site visit of this location. And um, I was kind of surprised to see that the skirting around. The RV was about 60% done, and there's a brand new deck that's been built. And it looks like it's about 95% done. So I was just a little confused by the fact that. The progression of this had gone so far, and yet this was being discussed this evening. That's all.
And Commissioner Walsh.
Um, thank you, Chair. Could I have them go back one slide because I didn't get a copy of the conditions? Oops. Thank you. And can you make it slightly bigger? Thanks.
So you, did you want the findings of fact or the conditions?
The conditions.
Can you go to the next slide? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, do any other commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, okay, Commissioner Best snuck it in there.
Excuse me while I take my hand down before I say anything. Um. I think it's good that we put condition of three in there. Um. Although normally we don't put uh conditions in that are zoning ordinance sections, uh, just because it's somewhat redundant. There's another one I I want to mention, and uh staff, uh, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I believe that um. Section three, uh, point 17 point B of the. Zoning code says that equipment machinery in building must be uh. And building materials must be screened. And I believe that uh was mentioned um. Storage on the property by Mr. Good. So I wanted to make sure that we. Uh, either acknowledge that it is part of the code and must be done. Or that we put it uh in a uh condition if we feel that it is necessary. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? All right, I'm not seeing any. Um, does the applicant or their representative wish to address the commission um on this case? It doesn't appear to be. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on this case? If so, please raise your hand. All right. I'm trying to keep track of all of you. I'm not give, being given the numbers of which which order you raised your hand in though. So please pardon me if I get the wrong order here as I call on you. Um, Joelle Worth, uh, you have three minutes. Um, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Okay, my name is Joelle Worth. I'm at high own property 5645 North Cunningham. I did submit comments in the first request to the staff, which I'm not sure why they didn't receive them, but they were submitted. Um, my concern is that this trailer was on location. They did not apply for a temporary permit that I know of. Um, the other thing that's really interesting is this is a very dense juniper forest there. The RV um products, these mobile homes are very flammable. I'm concerned for the location there that we could have a devastating fire that could wipe all of us out. Um, there also, it needs to be mentioned that there is no immediate waste dump station in the immediate location. So I think that um when you look at what has happened, if we look at the valley area in general. I think 40% of the code enforcement um violations are to deal with these. Instances where you've allowed these RV units to abide and because they don't have proper waste. So it's really something that you need to look at a little bit more systemically than just allowing it to allow people to. Um, live in a, in these housing without having proper infrastructure. This person has identified that they want to allow their friends to come up and bring their trailers on the property as well. Um, I just don't think it's fair to the community in general to allow this. I think that we should have, everybody should develop properly, like we're held to with water and wastewater and proper infrastructure. And so we're not creating a public health nuisance or an environmental impact from fires. By having these modular units where the fire department, I have provided information that shows this is a very difficult thing for a fire department to address. Highly flammable, very quickly, basically they cannot respond. So have, now we have it different. The valley is very dramatically different where you have zero vegetation. Here we have a very dense juniper forest in this tract as you look at it. So I think you should really look at this and think about it. So I'm I'm opposing this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Worth. Um, okay, uh, next person, I'm just gonna go in order of how I see you um in my list. A Kayle Scog. If you want to go ahead and uh unmute, give us your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Yes, this is Kaylee Scoog. I'm at four, five, six, four, six, North Wilshire Drive. We're currently about to begin the building process, so just a few lots down from what we're talking about. Um, I agree with Joelle and with Colton. I object on this matter. Um, we're very concerned about the impact on the community character and bringing down. The value of the surrounding houses as well as it being an incredible fire hazard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, Zachary Page.
Hey, um, yes, I'm the owner of 5718 North Wil- Wilshire Drive, and I'm just to the south of the property. And uh, I recently just purchased this property probably four months ago, and I've been working on a shed over there. And originally I pulled the property lines, I pulled a string line all the way through. And we realized that the travel trailer had already been placed about 10 feet onto my property. Just to start with, so I got in contact with the owner, and he had somebody come over and they scooted it back. But still, the direction that it's facing, it's nosing into my property. So if I was ever to put up a fence or anything like that. Um. He would have to either, I don't know how he would ever even get out of there. And so that's a pretty big concern just for personal reasons. And then I just what Joelle was hitting on as far as uh the noise. I mean, being right there from the travel trailer to the house that I'm planning on building, I have my plans there at the county. And they're reviewing them. I'm planning on building a thousand square foot stick frame built house. And just if you're running generators 24/7, if it's cold nights. I mean, that would be a pretty big impact on my residence, especially. Yeah, on colder nights and different things. And just, I would think if you're trying to go this route, you would do everything like you're saying. And just even now, if you look at the photo that they took compared to the site plan. Everything is switched and it's not what he said he was going to do. And I believe that there's already a septic system that's on the site, and I don't know if that was ever permitted. And I don't know how you would get the permit for the septic if all of this is still being reviewed. So that's also a big concern of mine, but I think, yeah, the fire danger of being right there, and then the noise is just a big deal. And even with those generators, I mean, you have gasoline, you're pouring into the generator, and there's a lot higher chance. Of something like that lighting on fire and just. Even just the durability of the trailers is also a big concern. I mean, you see those things tipped over on the side of the road, and they're not built very well at all. I mean, you have a little bit of particle board on some thin piece, pieces of aluminum, so I would say that's also a big concern. So I'm very opposed to this.
You're at 30 seconds left, sir.
Did you have any additional comments, uh, Mr. Page?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. McNeely. I'm wondering if you can address anything. Okay, well, let's give Mr. Short the chance because he probably already knows what my questions are. Go ahead, Mr. Short.
Hey, Bob, I believe you're muted.
Yeah.
If you could put some mute.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify a a few things about this. The applicant uh did apply for, he does, he did get a 120 day permit. Uh, I believe that did expire, so I don't think that's active at this point, but he originally put it on there with the permit on the property. And if if you note on the site plan, um, it does show where the. The RV was to be placed. We haven't confirmed that yet. Um, however, after, if this is approved, the applicant then is required to get a building permit. Specific building permit based on these RVs as a residence. And there's a few things that they'd look at in that case. First of all, they look at um. They have a site plan to make sure it is in the right place, and it's not a question of someone else's property. It is in the setbacks. Uh, and then they also look at water and sewer hookups to make sure those are properly done. So that you don't have spills. And I should also mention that there really isn't any evidence to show that. An RV presents any more fire danger than uh than a stick built house or other types of development. And I believe, and I haven't looked carefully, but I believe this is very close to the um High Country Fire Rescue Fire Station. Um, so I just wanted to clarify a few things. Um, and that's, that's it. Any other questions for staff?
Nope. Um. Ms. Worth, we don't uh permit second comments from from the public, so I do apologize for that. Okay. All right. Does anyone else in the public have any comments or concerns who hasn't already spoken? Okay, not seeing any, so I'm gonna close it to the public comment portion. And go to commission discussion. So I won't do a roll call. I'm just gonna let you guys raise your hands. So Commissioner Williams, you're up.
Um, can someone clarify um the use of generators? In these, I guess it was my impression that they're, they have to either have a solar or a hardwired electrical hookup. Like, they can't just run generators for their electricity all day long. Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Short. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Short.
Uh, so yes, they can run generators. That is a part of what what they do sometimes. But if you'll notice, there's a condition, I'm not sure which one it is. It uh. It does limit that to 50 decibels at the property line, which is really a really low sound, so that would need to be insulated. And uh, as I said, the the building division requires a a building. the, the building division requires a, a building permit for, for these RVs as residents specifically. So they would look at all electrical hookups, all plumbing, uh, including wastewater and potable water hookups.
Mr. Short, is there, um, a, a time cutoff for generators? I feel like that was something that's come up in the past.
I'm not aware of anything, uh, just because I don't think that is, that is in the code. Um, I think it's, that's because, you know, people were in generators at night, you know, as well. But if you're talking about fifty dB at the decibels of the property line, uh, imagine that sixty-five decibels is conversational speech. So it'd be quite a bit lower than that at the property line. So it is intended to be pretty quiet. The generators are intended to be pretty quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Uh, Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Um, big picture, I think there's something like ten thousand lots in the valley area, I'm not order anyway. Uh, there are a lot of RVs being used for permanent residents which are not in compliance. So, uh, despite the challenges, I'm always happy to see one come before us because I, you know, I know that's one that's going to be checked on by county staff and, uh, should be safe and operated properly. As I mentioned before, um, well, the, the neighbors should know that they, uh, if they see things that are out of compliance, they need to let the county know. Uh, fifty decibels is quite quiet and you can figure out how to measure that, I think yourself, uh, probably using a phone. Um, also, I mentioned the zoning section, equipment, machinery and building materials uh, must be screened. So if the neighbors see anything that is out of compliance, uh, they should let the county know and I believe the county will respond. And I understand the conflict between stick-built and and basically trailer side by side. But in the county, we have, uh, the same housing crisis that everybody's got across Northern Arizona. And I think this is, uh, one of the ways that it can be mitigated. Um, thanks.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if we could go back and look at the photograph of the site and compare that to the, uh, site plan as was submitted. Do the two conform right now? It doesn't appear to be. It looks like the fifth wheel is much closer to the, to the shed. Um, and if there's already skirting and whatever installed, then there's clearly no intent to move that. So it, it would appear that there's already a conflict here. Is one of the staff that's visited the site got any insight on that?
Uh, Commissioner Wilson, I don't think we're really aware of, 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 if it's in the right location at this point. We, we have, we have those photographs. It's difficult to see where property lines are sometimes in this area. Uh, but if that's not in the correct location, it would, it would need to be moved. It would need to comply with, uh, with this site plan that the applicants presented. And that site plan goes forward as part of the building permit. In fact, the building permit's a little bit more, uh, they, they look at it a little bit more carefully than we do. As you've seen, some of the site plans that we get early on aren't, aren't the greatest. Uh, we're basically looking for them to show, to, to show that they're meeting the setbacks. Uh, so that-
Yeah, it also appears that the carport and shed are reversed on the site plan versus what the photograph shows for the as-built. Um, could we go back to photograph real quick? Yeah, the sheds on the left side there, the carport's on the right. If we go back to the site plan, it's opposite that. Um, and the other comment I wanted to share with the, uh, the members of the public that are concerned about the noise levels, fifty dB is the, about the sound level of a quiet office space and that would be at the property line. Um, and they would have to maintain that. So the, the potential impact of having to listen to a generator would be very, very low. Writing they're complying with the, the code as exists. Thank you.
Commissioner Leslie.
So as I, thank you. As I stated earlier, um, I did a site visit today of this location. And the trailer, looking at the site plan, the trailer has been located at a forty-five degree angle, basically to what would be to the west of that fifty-seven forty-two address dot. Um, as, as I stated earlier too, the skirting around seems to be about sixty percent done already. And they built a deck on the facing the south, I'm sorry, um, on the left, on the, on the passenger side of the trailer, there's a, a new deck. Um, and it's about ninety to ninety-five percent done. So a lot of that would have to be torn down in order to move the trailer because it is not located as the site plan shows now. Thank you.
Okay, and I think Mr. Short has made it pretty clear that that's what they're gonna have to do. So, um-
Madam Chair, if I may, um-
Yeah.
The other option is if it needs setbacks, they could just change the site plan, of course. Now, that would be, yeah, uh, as part of the building permit, they, they could revise the site plan.
It, it, it does sound like there's already concern of, of trespass as well, so. Yeah, so, um, is there any way to-
Setbacks. That's what I mean. It would have to meet setbacks.
Yeah.
So if there's trespass, then it's not meeting setbacks. So yes, it would need to be removed at that point.
Okay. So I think it's, I think it's fair to let the building division, uh, take care of all of that. I do feel, even though there's no studies that have been done on risk of fire being more for RVs than, than not, um, I do kinda tend to agree that it more likely is. So I am just throwing it out to the rest of the commissioners and to alleviate some of the stress that the neighbors are feeling who live in the vicinity. Um, I think it might be appropriate to add a condition that they coordinate with High Country Fire and have the chief come out and do an assessment and that they need to abide by his guidelines for fire mitigation on the property. Is that something that the other, I get one thumbs up from my Chair Wilson. Cause I, that would be, you know, removal of close brush, you know, giving a good buffer zone. I feel like, you know, making the property comply with like firewise guidelines is not an unrealistic or out of, out of line, uh, requirement. So if the rest of the commissioners are amenable to that, huh, I'm also gonna add that to the next one we have from the next hearing case we have, so. Um, but if everybody's amenable to that, then I would like to request that we add an additional condition that if we can go to the conditions or somebody bring up a, um, document to, to type it out.
Yes, I'm sure I'm working on that right now.
Thanks. Um, I think it could just in general state that the applicant will coordinate with the local fire chief to create a firewise plan for the property to mitigate, uh, fire danger, some things along those lines.
Okay, can you say that one more time?
The applicant shall coordinate with the local fire chief to create a fire mitigation plan for the property. And they will submit that plan to county staff. Do any of the other commissioners have any modifications or addition?
Yeah, could be submitted to the building department for verification when they're out inspecting otherwise.
That works for me. That way the building division can ensure that they complied with the guidance provided by the fire chief. Okay, yeah. Okay. I think that works. Um, I would also like to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Best said in trying to alleviate some of the concerns that the neighbors have and that this is a, this has a time limit, right? So right now we have a five-year time limit on this permit. So if any of the neighbors find them out of compliance with what has been put here and they report it to the county, then they are not eligible for any kind of automatic renewal. They will have to come back to us and we will not permit them to continue using that until they are in full compliance. So there, you know, it's not a, this is done and you can't ever undo it situation. This is a, we're gonna see how this goes. And if the neighbors have legitimate, they violated this or they violated that in our conditions of approval, then that needs to be sent to community development staff and, and documented to code compliance. And that will be, that will be brought up. Your, your comments and, and any violations that are found will be brought up to us. When this comes back around. Commissioner Best.
And we don't have to wait five years. If they, uh, are not in compliance with the code or with the conditions, a phone call to the county starts the process and I don't know how far behind we are on addressing those, but, uh, it's, uh, just a matter of everybody being a good neighbor. I'm trying to keep it positive, but, uh, you can definitely complain about something that is out of compliance with either the code or the conditions of this document.
Yeah, I'm guessing that they'll be given a very certain time window to get back into compliance. And if they do not get back into compliance, it will render their CUP null and void. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're, we're, I want the public to know that we are listening to you. We understand your concerns and we are trying to look at all aspects of this, including, um, and I'm sorry, we're closed to public comment, Ms. Worth, so I'm not able to take your comment. We are listening to you. We're trying to find a compromise that will hopefully work for everyone, but there is, there is, you know, a way forward should there be a serious violation of their CUP, so. Do any of the other commissioners have any comments or are we good to move forward with um, an approval for the CUP with the amended conditions? If so, I'll take a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve CUP twenty-five dash zero one three with the conditions as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson for approval and a second by Commissioner Williams. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Berger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie.
Nay.
Nay, okay.
Nay.
And this is Vice Chair Burton. I also vote aye. So we have all but one for aye. All right, so the motion passes. All right, next case is CUP twenty-five zero zero seven. Another RV as a permanent residence, this time in Kachina Village. Staff, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Gesslinger, hope I pronounced that right, RV as a residence, that's CUP twenty-five zero zero seven. In this case, the owner is Eric Gesslinger, Flagstaff. The applicant is Steve Sorden, also Flagstaff. Location of the property is at thirty twenty-four Ancient Trail in Kachina Village. And the zoning is AR one. The request is to use a park model RV as a permanent residence on a point-two acre parcel in the AR one zone. Now, this is an area, uh, this, these are, there's a, a group of, uh, legal non-conforming lots, so these are legal, they're grandfathered in, but they are in the AR one zone. Uh, in this case, it's in Kachina Village, so they have water, sewer and electricity all available on the site. This is, uh, the city map showing the subject property. You can see it in that AR one zone right there. As I said, these are all legal non-conforming AR one lots. Behind it, you have the RS ten thousand zone. So aerial photos showing the subject property, pretty forested, so you can't see a lot. And this is, uh, a, the site plan showing the placement of the, uh, park model RV. A note, it's pretty far back, toward the back of the lot, ancient trails up here. And this is a photograph of the lot. I just wanted you to see how, you know, it's pretty deep lot, so would be back in here. It would be actually pretty visible. It's fairly, fairly good size, but it would be back toward the back of the lot, not readily visible from the street. Although it is kind of a, a nice looking, uh, park model RV. It's not your normal metal-sided RV. There's a picture of it and here's another photograph of it. Uh, this is a street view looking to the east, right down the street. This is a, the neighbor to the west. You can see the fence right here. They put up a nice, uh, six-foot fence along this, along the property line. This is the subject property here. And this is the neighbor to the east. You can see their house and, and, you know, garage and things, a carport here. Okay, in terms of citizen participation, uh, neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property were invited to a meeting on April seventh on the subject property. According to the applicant and citizen participation report, uh, he indicated that several neighbors were in support of the proposal or were not concerned about the RV. So he actually mentions talking to someone and they, they're like, we don't really care if you put there, put it there or not. And then some were actually in support of it. Uh, the, one of the primary concerns from everyone, I mean, a lot of the people there were that it would be used as a short-term rental and I wanted to put out to the commission that, uh, the county has a short-term rental ordinance and it does not permit short-term rentals of RVs in Coquignol County. Two neighbors did object to proposal. They were again concerned about, uh, the use of the RV as a short-term rental and also that it would lower property values. And this is some staff analysis of it. Uh, the property is in an area with mix, with a mix of single-family and manufactured housing. So in the AR one zone, you can't have manufactured housing. In the RS ten thousand, you cannot have manufactured housing, so it's kind of a mix out here. Obviously, in the AR one zone, you can also have single-family and I think most of it is developed that way. Someone needs to mute. I'm getting feedback.
Sorry, Bob, that was me. I had to join on my phone because my internet crapped out for a minute. I'm back though.
Okay, thanks. Madam Chair, uh, so, uh, and I want to put out that, as you can tell by the picture, the park model is similar in appearance to a small manufactured home. Uh, the proposal's also, it's consistent with comprehensive plan and Kachina Village, um, area plan policy- The proposal is also, it's consistent with comprehensive plan and Kachina Village area plan policies. And these are some of the things they support, affordable housing, cottage-type cabins, mixed development pattern. And if you've been to Kachina Village, you know, it's it's a mixed development pattern there. It also supports infill and redevelopment that is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. And these are the findings of fact for a CUP. I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP 25-007 with the recommended conditions. But that'll take any questions from the commission.
Does anyone in the commission have any questions for staff? Really? Interesting. Okay. All right, Bob, I'm just gonna throw it out there now. We're going to be doing another condition onto this one. So. All right. Does the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to make any comments to address the commission? If so, please raise your hand. No, again, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case? Okay, crickets again. Oh, nope, we do have one. All right, I have a Maureen Zavala. You will have three minutes. Please provide your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Hi, my name's Maureen Zavala. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, good. I live at 3078 Round Rock OV, which is just one block north of this property. And I guess my my big concern with this is I know this particular structure is very attractive, but my fear is that this is going to open up opportunity for other people to say they could put an RV on their property and use it as full-time residence. And that could open up because because we are Kachina Village, we do have a lot of mixed housing here. We have, you know, homes that were manufactured housing from the seventies and eighties, et cetera. And my fear is that this will create something where somebody could put an old RV on their property and because short-term rentals are allowed here, that eventually that will turn into more of a campground type feel. I just want, my concern is that this will gallop ahead into something that we really don't want here as opposed to, you know, this this attractive looking RV that they posted in the future. So I'm opposed to it.
Thank you for your comments, Maureen. And when I get to my time to speak, I'm going to address a few of your comments.
Thank you.
So you can go ahead and hang on and listen to those. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to make a comment on this case this evening? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and close it to public comment and open it up to commission discussion. Who wants to start? Anybody? Okay, then, okay, Vice Chair Wilson, start with you.
I can make the findings.
Okay. Commissioner Burger?
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Best?
I can also make the findings. I want to point out to the public that this is really controlled by zoning and the zoning code. It's not just something that we're making up and deciding this evening. As long as there are no factors that would stop this process in this in this zone, which is a little strange because apparently it was grandfathered in. So I can see neighbors being uncomfortable with it. But that is a fact. It does exist. And we have a zoning code that controls this sort of structure and its location. And as long as the applicant is generally within that and there are no other factors, that's kind of what we're left with. Thank you.
I will comment that this is permitted with a conditional use. It's not by right. So we do have to all kind of agree. You raised your hand again, Commissioner Best. Did you have something else? Nope, okay. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and and make my comments about this. So I am going to ask that we add another condition for firewise. Because I am a resident of Kachina. I do not live far from here. I drive by this property a minimum of two times a day, six days a week. So I will be keeping an eye on it. I also wouldn't even, I would not be in agreement to this if it wasn't a park model home. Because an RV would be completely out of character and completely out of line for Kachina because we are packed in here pretty tight. As you can see from this lot, it's a very narrow lot with the neighbors very close to the property line. So and given that it's on the back side of Kachina with very limited exit, it is very important to me that this, that they get firewise on this property and that they meet what that requirement is. Because getting in and out of here, we're in a canyon and one fire, I mean, it'll just take everybody. So so I would like to add that, okay. All right, that's fairly close, but I do want to modify it a little bit, Mr. Short, because we have Bearjaw and they'd come and do a firewise assessment. All you have to do is submit an application. So I think it should be in alignment with with the local fire department and Bearjaw. Because they're the ones who come out and walk the property and meet with the property owner and provide their recommendations.
Oh, Madam Chair. Could you describe what Bearjaw is? I'm not familiar with them.
Yeah, so somebody on the city council doesn't know what Bearjaw is.
This is Jess with staff commissioners. It looks like Chair Burton is
Okay, my internet.
I think we can safely say, so fire districts are their own taxing and governmental district. So this is probably a service being used by the by the local fire district to to do site assessments for yeah, for flammable, you know, fuels on the site. Thank.
Mr. Mcneely, I was able to to join on my phone. Sorry, I do not know what's going on with my internet today. So what did I miss?
Oh, so Chair Burton, there was some discussion and and Bob Short was was asking, when you dropped off of you, if you could describe what Bearjaw is. Our assumption is because because you are in a fire district, that fire district has a has a board and is their own taxing entity and they have their is their own governing entity. I'm assuming this is the organization that they are using to assess properties and assist with with making properties safer when it comes to the flammable fuels on the property.
Yeah, so Bearjaw is kind of shared between a couple of fire districts. I think Monds Park is the other one. And they come through, they do community cleanup, they do property assessment. They're kind of like our hotshots for the local community. They are a great service for our community. So it's it's a great idea for any resident to take advantage of of their time. It doesn't cost anything for someone to come do an assessment and get the recommendation. So I, you know, it's something that I encourage all residents in the area to in Kachina and Mountain Air and the areas that also have their access to them to do. So okay, let's see, so.
So Madam Chair, is it associated with, it's associated with the Highlands Fire Department?
Yeah.
District. That was my concern, is that it's a private, that it was a private organization.
No. It's not private. It's it's in cooperation with Highland. And all the information about them is easily found online. So it's it's kind of, I kind of consider it a sub-department of the fire district.
Okay. All right, this is very difficult for me to do from my phone. So is there any more discussion about this or can I try and rejoin again from from my teams?
Why don't you go ahead and rejoin? I do have one thought here. Bob, she had said the local fire department versus chief. And and Bearjaw is, it's a type-two hotshot crew that works in conjunction with the local neighborhoods to provide that service. So it is correctly phrased there, a bear local fire department and Bearjaw for a assessment of. Because it's not a Bearjaw assessment. It is an assessment done by Bearjaw.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for it's very hard when I'm on my phone and I can't see what's going on. My internet is just misbehaving today.
Okay, Madam Chair, could you rephrase that? The applicant should coordinate with the local fire department.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can find. So, yeah, so Bearjaw interagency fire and fuels. It's as it states, it's interagency. So it's just, it's a service they provide to a couple of the fire districts and all their information is right on Fire Highland's website.
Just right, just where you're at right now, just right, and Bearjaw's fire and fuel to conduct an assessment of the property to create a fire mitigation, then you're good to go.
Yep, I like that. Commissioner Leslie? Oh, go ahead, Bob.
No. I'm done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Leslie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, on this one, I did a site visit back on May 12th and I think I recall seeing connections, also water, power, sewer. So is this one going to have a RV power pedestal installed? And if so, then we could remove item three on this condition form that has listed. Would that be correct? Thank you.
Well, they definitely have access. I don't see any reason why we would allow a generator when they have direct access right to the site for APS. I don't know if the last one had direct access to. It didn't sound like it had any infrastructure there, but tying into APS here, the lines are literally right there.
That would be correct, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, so and I did check with and just, just so you all are aware, full disclosure, I did check with the water district and he does have the connections already, from what I understand for water and sewer. So that isn't a concern. I'm not worried about the environmental concerns for this, other than just potential fire risk. And, you know, the fact that I I'm only on board because it is of the appearance of a tiny home and it doesn't look like an RV. So because of the lot, it's hard to put something else on there because it's such a skinny lot. So it makes sense to me that a tiny home goes in there. So is there any more discussion from anyone or are we ready to have a motion in a second?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve CUP 25-007 as amended.
And I will second that, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Walsh.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor, Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. It passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is an interesting one, CUP 25-015, radio astronomy antennas. Please proceed with your presentation and yeah, you're swapping it. Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. In this case is CUP 25-015, the ASU astronomy antennas conditional use permit. The property owners for the site are Crater Ranch LLC and Bar T Bar Ranch LLC, both out of Winslow. The applicant for this case is Judd Bowman from Arizona State University out of Tempe. And this request has two property locations. One is approximately two miles north of Meteor Crater, Meteor Crater Road. And one is three-quarter miles west of Loop Corner, adjacent to BNSF Rightofway, south of Highway I-40. The two parcels together and the two parcels together total just over 5,000 acres in size. And they are in the general zone, which is typically a single-family residential and agricultural zone with a 10-acre parcel size minimum. This request is for the conditional use permit for radio astronomy antennas, including relay towers and associated equipment, which fits the zoning ordinance definition of utility facility. So this is a vicinity map and we are east of Twin Arrows, which would be off your screen to the left and west of Winslow, which would be off your screen to the right. This is an area of Checkerboard State Land, which you can see in the blue. And this is all ranching, except for we have the Meteor Crater RV Park right here off of the Meteor Crater exit. And just south of the aerial photos here is the actual Meteor Crater and the museum associated with it. So sort of between the exit and RV Park and Meteor Crater is the, what I'll call the main property, which would have most of the antennas there. And then there's this property. This is I-40, by the way. There's the property west of Loop Corner here, which would have 35-foot relay tower. For details on this request, the purpose is to allow scientists to study, monitor, and predict space weather in order to maintain satellite operation and to ensure safe space exploration. And also to train university students at ASU in astronomy. The Meteor Crater property, the main property, would include 68 five-foot antennas within a fenced area. It would be wildlife-friendly fencing. That property would also include a 40-foot shipping container, which would be modified with building permits in order to contain some equipment associated. And then also as a contingency and the applicant can explain whether or not this will be needed or the likelihood of it. But as a contingency, they may have a 20-foot relay tower on this property. The other property adjacent to Highway I-40 and the BNSF would have a 30-foot tall relay tower. Both these towers would be lattice. And it would have an associated equipment building and solar. And both the sites would be unmanned and operated from ASU's Tempe campus. So this is that main property between Meteor Crater and Highway I-40. So this is that main property between Meteor Crater and Highway I-40, uh, approximately three quarters of a mile to the east of Meteor Crater Road would be located, this fenced area that would include the antennas and the shipping container, and then another 1,500 feet approximately to the east, further away from Meteor Crater Road, uh, would potentially be this 20 foot relay tower. This is just more of a zoomed in of the center of that parcel, so that you can see, uh, where you would enter through a gate, the, through the fenced area. 64 of the five foot antennas would be located in the circled area, and then four additional antennas located here. Again, potential relay tower over to the east here. And this is just a diagram of the antennas themselves, this part would be underground, this part would be the five foot. This here on top is a diagram, uh, the elevations of the modified storage container, the applicant in their narrative noted that they would paint it an earth tone color, so it would blend in with the surrounding natural environment. And then these are just elevations of the potential 20 foot lattice tower. Moving on to the other property, so here's sort of a larger site plan here, a more zoomed out one. Uh, Interstate 40 right here, BNSF Railroad, uh, south of that and between the parcel and I-40, and then this dotted line is where the power lines would be, I guess there's a frontage road there as well. Um, the 35 foot tower would be just in the very corner here. I have also a zoomed in site plan here, showing the tower and the equipment building, where it would hook up to overhead power lines that exist here. And they also drew on this site plan a 35 foot fall radius, just so that if the tower were to fail, everything would be contained on the site. This photo is an example of a similar project that was done in New Mexico. I blew it up a little bit, so it's kind of pixelated, but, uh, in your packet, you could probably see it a little bit better. These are those five foot antennas, this is an example of what the storage container would be like. So as far as a visibility analysis, I have some photos of the subject property and nearby roadways that I'll go through after this slide, but I did want to note that Meteor Crater property, those five foot antennas would likely not be visible from Meteor Crater Road or from I-40. The shipping container, I believe, would possibly be minimally visible from Meteor Crater Road, but the fact that it would be painted inert tone color to blend in, you probably wouldn't notice it unless you were looking for it. And then the 20 foot relay tower, just because it's then even further than, uh, the rest of the facilities that would be on the site, that would make it even, uh, you know, less visible from Meteor Crater Road or I-40, but possibly you would see it from Meteor Crater Road. And then the BNSF property, uh, the 35 foot tower, uh, would likely be visible from Highway I-40, but it, I don't believe that it would be visually intrusive because it's actually, and I'll show on a map, uh, in a couple of slides, it's actually more than 400 feet south of the eastbound traffic lane for I-40, and it's also adjacent to, or would be adjacent to power lines that are approximately 50 foot tall. So this is a photo from Meteor Crater Road, looking up the existing ranch access road to, um, where the project site would be, and it would be just on this horizon, it would, it's hard to see from this photo. This is a photo, and I think it's actually a little bit west of the actual project site, but looking over at Meteor Crater Road would be here, you can see where it is, next to these power lines. This is the Meteor Crater RV Park and gas station up there, Highway 40 would be here. And this is that map of the BNSF property, obviously, this is right of way, you can see the cars, this is where power lines exist right now. Um, I measured out, um, the over 400 feet from the eastbound lane of I-40 here, and the tower location and falls down right there. So this photo was actually taken from very close to the BNSF, uh, rails, so I think right about here is where there was a fence, and so looking in that direction, I would imagine that the tower would probably be in about this location and about this tall, so this is still 200 feet um, from eastbound I-40. As far as long ran, long range plan conformance, uh, the comprehensive plan obviously applies in this area, and there are, there is a goal and policies related to wildlife, and the urban wildlife planner didn't find any conflict with wildlife in this location, especially considering that there would be wildlife friendly fencing surrounding that Meteor Crater property or the project area there. There are also policies related to utility infrastructure with minimal impact view sheds, uh, and staff finds that the view shed impact would be minimal. In this area, there's also the Diablo Canyon Rural Planning Area, and the goal of that document is basically to keep ranchland viable. Uh, so there's a goal related to supplementing ranching operations with other economic opportunities, and these leases would provide another economic opportunity for the two ranches involved. As far as citizen participation, there really weren't any other property owners around nearby, except for public agencies. So, um, the applicant notified the Arizona State Land Department, the Hopi Tribe, and the Navajo Nation of this request, and didn't receive any comments. Staff also did not receive any comments after reaching out to those groups. Here are the four findings of fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to make in order to approve the case, and I've detailed staff's responses in the staff report, staff is able to make all four findings of fact, and therefore, staff recommends approval of case CUP 25-015 with the seven conditions of the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Hey, I'm not seeing any at this time. Um, does either the applicant or their representative wish to make any additional comments to the commission? Okay, uh, Mr. Bowman, please state your name and address, and go ahead and address us.
Yes, hi, this is Judd Bowman, uh, from Arizona State University, uh, 781 East Terrace, Tempe, Arizona. And I am the applicant, and I just wanted to say I appreciate, uh, the commissioners and the staff's efforts in review, and I have no other comments.
Hey, thank you very much. Oh, looks like Vice Chair Wilson might have a question for you.
Surprise. Um, I'm curious to know whether there's any ground plane, um, installation involved with these antennas, or if it's just a post with an antenna on it?
Uh, yeah, I see Zach might be going to an image, uh, there, there's a post with an antenna on it, and then, uh, right under the antenna, so the seven feet under the antenna is a chicken wire like, um, wire, wire mesh.
Okay, that nothing more permanent?
Nothing more permanent, it just sits on the ground, and it's just under each antenna.
Okay, and the the posts are driven in, it looks like probably two, three, four feet. Um, having done some studies out there for a potential building, the rock can be very, very shallow, if you run into rock, what do you do then?
Yes, we picked this particular site after doing some assessment of the, of the soil depth, and so we're not anticipating uh, too many occurrences of running into rock. We have, within that 100 meter diameter region, uh, indicated on the site plan, we have some flexibility where we place these antennas, and so if we find a rocky, um, little section, we will move the antenna to somewhere easier.
Got you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case? All right, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm going to close it to the public and open to commission discussion. Is there any discussion to be had? Any commissioners have any comments? Crickets again, so are we ready to entertain a motion? If so, I'll take a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we recommend approval of this case number CUP 25-015 with the conditions as listed.
Hey.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Walsh and a second by Commissioner Berger to approve, uh, with the conditions as stated, uh, Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger? Commissioner Berger?
Oops, sorry, aye.
It's okay, uh, Commissioner Leslie?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton, I also vote aye, CUP passes unanimously. All right, next one on the list is a zone change, um, and a DRO, so ZC 25-002 and DRO 25-002. Go ahead, staff, with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is the Martin Zone Change and Design Review, that's ZC 25-002 and DRO 25-002. In this case, the property owner is Talea, I think, Martin, Flagstaff, Arizona, the applicant is Marcus Martin of Flagstaff, Arizona. Uh, the location is at 2830 Akona Trail in Kachina Village, the current zoning is RS 6,000, that's residential, single family with a 6,000 square foot minimum parcel size, and the requested zoning is RM 10A, that's residential multiple family with 10 units per acre maximum density. In this case, the size of the property is .5 acres, which would allow for five units on this property. The request is, as I said, is on change from RS 6,000 to the RM 10A zone, and that is to allow for the redevelopment of a, what was a fire station at one point, into a multifamily building with five housing units. Uh, and also design review for a multifamily building, which is required by, in, under the Kachina Village Area Plan Designer Review Overlay. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property, as you can see, it's in the RS 6,000 zone. There's an RS 10,000 across the street, and RS 4 over here, basically in a residential area. Uh, and I did want to point out some of the other RM 10As in this area, there's some right here, and some over here, I think this is not being utilized, I believe this is a park, and there's some down south of here. This is aerial photos showing the subject property, this is Kona Drive in Birch Springs, OB. Uh, this in the back is the parking area, and this is the building right here, kind of pretty tight on the spot. Some background on this case, um, the building on the site was previously a fire station in the Highlands Fire District. The applicant purchased it in 2018, and they converted it into a single family residence with a, an attached accessory dwelling unit. Uh, a couple of years ago, when he had some very large, uh, snowstorms, the four bay garage that was previously used by the fire trucks, of course, that collapsed, totally caved in. And now the applicant proposes to replace the four bay garage with three new residential units, and that would make a total of five units on this property. This is a, a site plan showing the subject property, as you can see, there's a established parking lot at the back, and there's also actually three other parking spaces here, and one other one up over here on the side. And this is the, uh, the original unit was in here. I believe they're doing some remodeling of, of both of those to provide these three additional units. Uh, the accessory was back here, it's my understanding, and these are the three units, this is one, two, and three, each with a door to the outside. And this is a picture of that, uh, fire bay that collapsed. Um, obviously needs to be rebuilt, something needs to be done with it. And this is a photograph of the, uh, parking at the back, so it does have nice established parking. And this is a, a photograph of the back of the building. And I wanted to show you, this is kind of gives you the neighborhood, the way the local neighborhood looks, it's kind of a, you know, it's eclectic as you, as you find in Kachina Village. Uh, the, let's see, this property is right across, uh, the street, I believe it's called Bird's Eye, the OB. This one's across the other street, the other side, and this one's kind of catty cornered from the property, I believe that's a different zoning right there. So, uh, we'll talk about designing a little bit, uh, so most of the outside walls would be retained, of course, all they would do is just close up that front wall. So everything is kind of similar in that sense, and, uh, where the garage bay doors were, that'd be reconstructed. Uh, the existing building contains variations in roof forms, and this is part of what the Kachina Village Design Review calls for. Uh, and that is to reduce the apparent mass of the building, and also lap sighting is already on this building, and that's consistent with the design guidelines. Uh, the front part would remain relatively flat, there's not much ways, way to move that to make that different to the way the building is constructed. So that doesn't change a lot, doesn't have a lot of articulation in that area. Uh, so, uh, the applicant wants to retain the existing color, which is like a light gray and also a dark gray. Uh, these are considered to be earth tones, I had to look that up to make sure, but they are earth tones, and they do kind of fit with the neighborhood and the local environment. They do want to retain the existing landscaping on the parcel, uh, and that's consistent with the design guidelines as well, which calls for retaining the existing landscaping, there's some mature landscaping on this property, of course. Uh, only minimal lighting is proposed, and, um, staff would approve that when the building permit came in. This is elevations showing the, the property, they're retaining these things that are part, you know, part of the fire station, of course. Uh, that area saw that was, had collapsed in, that, that would be, that would be replaced by this right here. These are sliding glass doors that are entrances to each of the apartments. And this shows the building, you can see the articulation where you have, well, variation of reforms, I should say, uh, where you have three different reforms here. Uh, you can see some other reforms and then these different pieces left over from the fire station, and also very mature landscaping around the property. And this is, it was difficult to kind of get this color, but this is the existing color, and the applicant would like to keep that, this color, of course, because otherwise you kind of have to paint the entire building again, um, and it does seem to blend with the natural landscape. In terms of citizen participation, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on February 3rd, 2025 at the property, three people supported the proposal and had no major issues with the project, and there were three people that opposed the project. Their concerns were, um, safety, home values, insurance rate increases, impacts on internet speeds, traffic and noise. And if you read the citizen participation report, the applicant did address, address those concerns, some of those are really not things that can be, uh, can be addressed, like internet speeds, it really doesn't have any impact on internet speeds. And this is staff analysis, uh, the proposal is consistent with the comp plan and Kachina Village Area Plan, and also the Flagstaff. And this is staff analysis. The proposal is consistent with the comp plan and Kachina Village Area Plan and also the Flagstaff Regional Plan Policies. They support affordable housing. Consistent with a mixed development pattern, as we saw in the photos I provided. It provides redevelopment that is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. And it's also consistent with the regional plan designation of suburban, and that supports densities from two to ten units per acre. This would actually be ten units per acre. It's also consistent with other areas of RM ten zoning that are located throughout Kachina Village. You know, this is not the only RM ten A zone here. Very importantly, it provides for an adaptive reuse of a fire station. With residential use, it's more compatible with the neighborhood. And it's also consistent with the Kachina Village Design Guidelines. These are the findings of fact for a zone change, and you can see they've all been addressed. We can discuss any of them that the commission has questions about. And I just want to point out that to approve a design review, the commission must determine the development is consistent with the Kachina Village Design Guidelines. There aren't any findings for a designer view. And with that, staff recommends the commission approves the DRO twenty five zero zero two and forwards the recommendation of approval of ZC twenty five zero zero two to the Board of Supervisors with the recommended conditions. So the Board of Supervisors ultimately approved zone changes. That'll take any questions from the commission.
Hey, Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Chair Burton. Mr. Short, can you go back to the slide that shows all the parking lots, parking spaces drawing?
All the drawing, the site plan?
That one. So are you telling me that all of the entries are on the, the bottom right corner? Into the homes, but the parking is all the way around on this other side?
My understanding, and I could, there's a floor plan in your package. Sorry, I probably should have put that up as well. My understanding is there's, there's the entrances from the back as well.
Okay, good.
And the back.
Okay, I was just concerned that people would park as close as possible to a door, and if that was on the street, that wouldn't be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Short, staff analysis says that you found that this is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I wonder if I owned a single-family home next door to this, how I would look at that and say it is compatible with the scale and character when it's going to be, is it a total of four residences or five when they're done?
Five, five residences.
So five residences. To me, doesn't appear to be compatible with scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Can you help me understand how staff arrived at that conclusion?
Vice Chair Wilson, I guess first of all, you look at the fact that it is, it was a fire station. And if you, and if you go back to like this, I'm not, if this happens to your, basically your home, which it was their home at the time, what do you do with this? You know, there's not much way to really fix it. It just makes sense that this really large building that's already a fire station could be repurposed in this way. And also, if you look at this building on the upper right hand right here, this building is catty cornered across the street, which is pretty large. It's a single family, no doubt. There's, there's one, maybe two residences in there. But it is kind of a unique situation. And Kachina Village can be eclectic in some sense, where you have different types of development. In the same area, it is residential.
So I, I would agree that it's certainly unfortunate that the collapse happened. But I, I don't necessarily agree that that then makes this compatible with scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Does the applicant or their representative wish to address the commission at this time? If so, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Hi, yes, Marcus Martin, applicant and co-owner, and I'm joined here with my mother, also the owner, Talea Martin. Appreciate everyone's time and work on this. Yeah, I guess just to address some of the comments that were made. The entry doors would be on the parking lot side, except for, I think, two of the units. But yeah, we have parking lots at locations for all of the entry doors. As it relates to the scale and character, I think Bob touched on it, but it, it does go back to the historical use of this, this site and of what the neighborhood has, has operated at, right? And so this, this particular property has never been used in, you know, in any way that has been conforming with the typical surroundings. It's always been atypical. We obviously didn't plan on having the garage collapse. It was really unfortunate, unexpected. We don't feel that it is any more typical to have a giant four-car garage there than, you know, three additional units. And so as we're looking at what to do in this unfortunate situation, you know, putting a giant garage there doesn't seem like the best use for, not just for us personally, but for the neighborhood. It seems like it's a lot more in, in, in the best interest of the community to do additional housing, given that affordable, housing affordability issues. Also, the Kachina Village Plan talks pretty in-depth about, about allowing those types of things, especially with properties that are have become blighted, which obviously this one has due to, due to these unforeseen circumstances. So given that history, this, you know, that is where it kind of does kind of fit with kind of how this is historically been used. It's always been atypical, and this is a, a better use than a four-car garage that used to house fire engines.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Vice Chair Wilson, go ahead.
I'm considering the, the seriously unfortunate event that occurred. Has a structural assessment been done on the remainder of the buildings? Or, or the structures there to ensure that they're safe?
We have had contractors come out and look at it, and yes, I mean, that was, you know, it's obviously our first question. They demoed the areas that were, were considered obviously unsafe. And, you know, we went through the process of getting approval to be able to access the property. Again, there was a good six months there where, you know, my mom couldn't live there, and the other tenant had to get kicked out. So yes, we went through that, the channels with our contractors to get rid of the, you know, those parts that were unsafe on the, on the building. So.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission? You'll have, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Mr. Marshall.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
My name is Bryce Marshall. I live at two seven seven one Bird Springs, Ovi, the place that's directly across from the bays of the fire station. And I've lived there for twenty-one years. I'm very familiar with the building. I'm very familiar with how it's been used and its condition now. So first of all, I'd like to start off by saying that since they took over in two thousand eighteen, they were made well aware by the fire, by the firemen that worked there that upon getting heavy snowfalls, they were to have to remove snow from the roof. They did not do that during that snowfall when the, this collapsed. And that's exactly, it's exactly why this, these bays collapsed. Thankfully, nobody was injured. They did have renters upstairs. They had the VRBO, which I think was at the time, empty downstairs. So they have three tenants, basically, or three people living at the unit right now, the owners, the, a renter which lives upstairs where the fireman used to be, and downstairs, they have a VRBO that they actively run all the time. So my big issues with this is that like VC Wilson has expressed, it does not fit into the community structure. It does not fit into the community whatsoever. Now, if this place was down by, you know, the, the gas station or the Dollar General or something like that, it might have a place for it. In the place that it's in, it does not. And so I've got some other things that I wanted to say about this. And number one is safety. We live at the top of Pump House Wash, the very top. This canyon that leads right from this property is the very top of Pump House Wash. If we have fire that comes up through Pump House Wash, and we have had to evacuate our house on more than one occasion, fire will come right through here. There's only one way in and one way out of this area right here. And I don't know how many houses are beyond this into Kachina Village, but there's also the gate into Forest Highlands. So if for some reason Forest Highlands has to evacuate there, they have to come through Kachina Village using this one, one of these gates, this gate or the gate on the north side of Kachina Village. So if you put another, you know, even three people or three units in this area, especially if they consider them low-income units, these areas, these units are likely to be, you know, have at least one or maybe two cars associated with them. That's going to be.
You're at thirty seconds left on your time for your three minutes, so thank you. Thirty seconds.
Okay. Thirty seconds. As far as infrastructure goes, yes, we already have problems with the internet and stuff like that, noise. We're going to have problems with insurance. Insurance has already gone up. It's going to up if they do this with it. And the history of the landlord, she has people in there, she has one guy who was camping in the backyard. And, you know, at the same time, so with all due respect, it does not fit in the community. The landlord does not control the people who are going to be there, as well as she would like to say they do. And so I'm very much against it, and most of the people in my neighborhood are very much against this.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Marshall. I have another person, Matt. If you want to go ahead and unmute, state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
First of all, thank you. My name is Matt Bridenthal. I've owned the house at twenty-eight hundred Bird Springs for close to twenty years. I'm, I'm open-minded, but I do have some major concerns. One of them is my lot is three-quarter acres, and to put five units on a three-quarter acre lot in Kachina Village does not conform, does not conform in this area. I would rather look at a four-car garage bay than seven additional vehicles. I don't think the intention is to allow affordable housing, which obviously I'm, I'm absolutely for. I, I think what we're actually doing here, excuse me, is converting from single-family to commercial, and it's going to be more of a hotel. The other concern I have is, you know, barking dogs is a big thing in Kachina. If you have four Airbnbs with four people coming up, leaving their dog out back, or even four individual renters, I think that could be an issue with, with more calls going into the county to control this. And those are my original thoughts. I, I think you, you know, you guys had mentioned like a cabin feel. It, it's pretty much a big box. And there's a big difference with having a fire station in a community. They're saying, well, you know, it was a fire station. A fire station gives us, gives a purpose, you know, it, it makes neighbors feel safe. I remember having the pancake breakfasts there and, and the fire guys would be out there winding up the hoses, and they were part of the community. A five-unit rental, and I manage over two hundred rentals in this town, a five-unit rental on that corner lot, I am not for. Long-term, possibly, maybe a few less units, maybe two units, three units, but, but five units total. And it's already my understanding that they're using it as a vacation rental. And once, if this gets passed, even if the owner doesn't plan on doing it, the next owner, that could be five vacation rentals. And there's nothing the community could do at this point. That's my thoughts.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this case? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to close it to public comment. Oh, okay, it looks like we have one person that snuck in there. A Ryan Burdenthal. If you'd like to go ahead and state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Yes, thank you. It's Ryan Bridenthal, twenty-eight hundred Bird Springs, Ovi. And the main comment that I have is that the property is currently marketed on Airbnb. So I wonder where the intention is. Just because if, if the true intention is to provide long-term housing for local people and things like that, then why isn't it just long-term rented? And why is it offered at Airbnb? I will say they have very good ratings. But there's kind of a there, there's something amiss if you're not doing it already, if that's really your intention. At least that, that's just my personal opinion. You know, like, I'm married to Matt Bridenthal, and we do manage rental, or he manages rental property, but we also own some of our own rentals. And we have been, we've never done an Airbnb, and maybe that's just my opinion. But we truly do want to provide local housing. And so when somebody is talking about wanting to provide local housing, but yet aren't already doing it when they probably could have been through an ADU, I, I just have to wonder. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public? Okay, so I'm, oh. We only permit one, one comment from each person. So, Mr. Marshall, unless there's somebody else with you who wishes to make a comment.
Actually, I was just trying to say that there's another one of our neighbors that's trying to figure out how to make comments, but they're on voice only, or, you know, like, sound only, so they don't know how to make a comment this way.
Um, well, they should be able to, if they're call, if they've called in, they should be able to unmute their phone.
Okay. John Christie, I don't know if you guys can do that from where you're at?
Zach mentioned he pushed the star key and six to unmute.
Oh, star key and six?
Oh, I see a phone that unmuted. I'm guessing that's.
Thank you, yes, I did it. Sorry about that. Technically challenged. Christie Becker at twenty-seven nine three Bird Springs, Ovi. And I'm going to echo, we've also owned our house twenty-plus years. Went to the pancake breakfast, love the neighborhood. And it is very, it is very neighborly. As everybody, we get more snow than everybody else does, for the most part, when we get dumped on up there. And that is also a big struggle when it comes to safety and us all being able to get in and out of the neighborhood. We've got a nurse in our neighborhood. We're all like collectively get together and maintain things on, on, on a, on a, you know, timely basis when these kinds of things happen. And having people that aren't full-time residents there can become a very big challenge. And I don't know how to state that enough. But, I mean, we, we are not there all year every day, but we are there frequently. And, but having a transient VRB type scenario will definitely cause challenges in that environment, in my opinion. I just want to say that, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to close it to public comment and open it to commission discussion. And if I could have any of the public go ahead and mute their microphones again, that would be great. Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It, it appears that despite the unfortunate circumstances, this, this property was originally purchased to be a primary residence with perhaps a single rental to it, which in my mind would remain relatively consistent with the neighborhood. and the requirements in for both the DRO and the zone change. Changing the property to something that would be clearly a commercial endeavor with multiple rentals all in that same small area, to me seems inconsistent with what that neighborhood is. And from what we're hearing this evening, from what the people that live in that neighborhood would want to see. And as unfortunate as that collapse was, it would appear to me that a garage could be built. It wouldn't have to be four bays in place of the four. And the existing primary residence and second rental would still exist. And people could move on and it would be consistent with what that neighborhood's character is. So right now I'm having a very difficult time being able to make those findings.
The rest of the commission? I'd, I'd love to hear from all of you. So let's just go ahead and run around the room here. So Commissioner Tohe, what are your thoughts?
Thank you for the time. As I think about it and as I think about what ADUs are supposed to be for, I, I, I tend to agree with Vice, Vice Chair. And I don't want to see something that's overly done when we do need, we do need housing. But I think there's, there's a point where that needs to be kept under some, some type of control so that everybody is happy the owners have maybe one or two units. But and then the neighbors are not feeling like their, their, their area is being commercialized. So I'll stop at there.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh.
I, I, thank you for the time. I appreciate that the footprint is remaining the same. I support affordable housing. And I also hear the concerns about the, from the neighbors. I would not make the findings if, if this is for short term rentals. But it doesn't sound like that's what they're supposedly doing. Am I correct in that?
Mr. McNeely, can you comment on the whole short term rental thing? And that, that whole process and what is and isn't allowed in and what needs permits and all that fun stuff?
Absolutely. So thank you, Madam Chair. So the zone change request is, is to allow more than two units, multifamily zoning. And in, in this case, they could give them the size of their, their parcel and probably the logistics of redeveloping this building, total of five, five dwelling units. And these would be, if a zone change was approved, building permits would be required for residential units. It would be permitted as multifamily residential units. Once any property owner, really in the state of Arizona, has developed a dwelling, a dwelling unit, be that a single family dwelling unit in this, or in this case, it'd be a five unit multifamily dwelling unit. That's, it's still considered a residential dwelling unit. But short term rentals can be allowed in any, in any permitted dwelling unit. It's a building, as we know from our previous cases. The county cannot, does not issue short term rental permits for recreational vehicles for RVs as those are not buildings built to a building code. So if, if multiple dwellings were built on this property, you know, the permits were filed through on a certificate of occupancy is issued, then any, the property owner, just like any property owner, could request a short term rental permit for any permitted dwelling. So if these are permitted as individual dwellings, you know, up to five individual dwellings, in theory, yes, they could be issued short term rental permits, just the same as any single family home or accessory dwelling unit in this neighborhood could get the same permits and I'm sure has. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair? And you're muted, Chair Burton.
Yeah, I see that. Commissioner Walsh, does that answer your question?
Okay, so yes, thank you for that. I was thinking that, but you just clarified that for me. I can make the findings for this project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would ask staff, given state law, are we allowed to take the use of this project, either long term rental or owner occupation into account vis a vis a vacation rental? Can we, are we even allowed to have that be a factor in this discussion?
Well, so Chair Burton and Commissioner Best, what I can answer there is you're, you're free to ask this, this property owner what their intended, what their intended future use of, of this property is. You, you could ask them what they, what they would like to do. There are mechanisms in theory where a property owner could de-restrict their own property to say that they are not going to do short term rentals. However, as a function of the conditional use, excuse me, the zone change, a, a function of the zone change under the zoning ordinance, the commission cannot add conditions to prohibit short term rental because short term rental is actually governed outside of the zoning ordinance, if that makes sense to you. So the commission or the, nor the county at large can, cannot put that restriction on a property owner. However, the property owner can, can state what their intended use is and, and could take their own actions to, to prohibit certain uses on their own property if they choose to. Very similarly, subdivisions, a new subdivision could choose, and many have, to write into their CCNRs that they will not allow short term rentals in their subdivision. And that's a private legal matter that they have chosen to do. So does that, does that answer the question?
Sure, can we ask the applicant?
I'm, I'm pretty sure they stated in their application, their intent is for these to be affordable rental units. Yeah, Vice Chair Wilson is nodding. So they, they, they pretty much already stated that that's their intent. Now whether that's what they do, you know, that's, but their intent was stated that these are meant to be like not short term rentals, but for local people.
Can we go so far as to condition that?
Not from what Mr. McNeely just said.
Condition it as a part of the zone change under the regulations of the zoning ordinance. You could ask, you could ask the property owner, you know, what their intent is and, and what they could demonstrate as proof to you as, as being able to hold themselves to that intent.
Hold on one second, Vice Chair Wilson. Commissioner Best, would you like the applicant to reaffirm what they've already said to you?
Sure.
Okay, can we get the applicant to unmute and please address Commissioner Best?
Yes, hi. Yeah, also just a little bit of background. My, my mom, I bought, we bought this property in part because my mom literally had to move out of Flagstaff because she didn't, she wasn't able to afford housing here. And this was an opportunity. She works for the city and, and this was an opportunity. Did you want to say something? Or not named, sorry, yeah. Anyways, so I just wanted to address that because it was brought up before. But yes, no, we, we, we do have, we do Airbnb a portion of it. It, it was originally a 4,500 square foot, one bedroom, one bath building when we bought it. So it's doing nothing for the community. We now have, you know, we're supporting my mom and the local family as well. We don't have any intentions whatsoever of, of doing Airbnb for the other three units. We have the one, one, one area that we do Airbnb and it's got a bunch of firehouse memorabilia. One of the, one of the cool things about buying this was, I mean, it's how cool is it to own a firehouse? Like a lot of the firefighters gave us a lot of memorabilia and it's just a cool thing. We have a lot of kids coming in there that love it. It's, but yeah, it's not our intention. We, we actually don't really, my wife helps manage it and she gets angry at me for it because it's a pain in the butt to manage short term rentals. So it's not something we want to take on. But yeah, our, our intention is 100% to have that, have a long term renters in all three of the additional units. We, we charge an incredibly reasonable amount, given our understanding and my mom's, you know, experience with the housing challenges within Flagstaff, so.
It's a unique property, which is, that's an Airbnb.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, so the answer is your long term intention is a couple of units of Airbnb and the rest is long term rental or personal use?
No, no, no. We, we have an area of the house because my mom doesn't need that much space that we Airbnb today. That would be the only space that would be Airbnb. We have zero and we have no intention of Airbnb being short term rentering. None, none of the additional units. There's zero intention of that. All three of the new units will be planned to have long term renters in them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, maybe Mr. McNeely could confirm, but once a zoning change is approved, regardless of what the current owner says here today or any future owner may want to do, the zoning change is done and they can do anything they want that's legal. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Williams, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts fall in line with Commissioner Wilson's, actually. I mean, I kind of, I mean, I understand, you know, wanting to put three more units in there, but I also feel like the applicant bought it as a single family, with single family zoning in a neighborhood of single family zoned houses. And clearly it's, you know, it's, the zone change, most of the, most of the neighbors are having kind of an issue with it for various reasons. And yeah, once it's multifamily, it's multifamily. I mean, they're probably not going to own it forever. So who knows who, who will be next? But it just seems like, I don't know, I mean, nobody has enough garage space, so you could just rebuild the garage and because that's what it was. So I, I don't know, I, I'm siding with Commissioner Wilson and his thoughts.
Okay, Commissioner Berger.
Well, this is a, one of the ones that you have to face is somebody who's been around for a while in development. And my first, very first thought is safety. I know the area well. I don't live there, but I have people and friends that are there and they're having a lot of heartache right now with the Airbnb type model. I'm just more concerned about the safety, I think, than anything else. And I'm kind of in agreement is once it gets rezoned, that's it. It doesn't matter that the owners don't or do want to do it. I, I'm also in agreement that once you own a property, you have a right to, to use it. I think in this circumstance, I'm seeing some things going on involved in Phoenix where you can rent garage for exotic cars or, you know, we have the Route 66 Car Fest up here where they could rent out and maybe they could do two, two garages and rent those out for storage. But those are my thoughts.
Okay, Commissioner Leslie.
As I sit here and listen to everything that's been stated, at this point, I am siding with VC Wilson as well on comments. And I don't have anything else to add. Just, he touched on a lot of positive things that feel that they fit this situation. Thank you.
Okay. So, and this is not looking favorable for recommendation. So I just want to go back around. So just a reminder, this is only a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So even if we recommend not to approve a zone change, that doesn't mean that they won't. And even though we might recommend to approve a zone change, they might quash that. So this is only a recommendation. And there are appeal opportunities on both sides when it goes to the Board of Supervisors. So I just kind of want to go back around again and I want you guys to just tell me like you can or you can't so that I know what kind of motion we need to make for a recommendation or not. And then I also, even if we, so there's two motions here, right? So I, we're going to have to vote on both of them. So for the DRO, we're not changing the footprint, right? So it's going to basically look the way it is. So I kind of feel like, for me, I can, I can make those findings for the DRO. So I don't know, you know, how the rest of you feel. So even if we, we don't recommend the zone change, we still do need to vote on the DRO. So I'm going to go back around one more time and I would like to hear a, can't make the findings for the, the zone or I can, or and I can make the findings or I can't for the DRO. So I know, so that I know where we stand and I know how to proceed. So Commissioner Tohe. Is she still with us? Commissioner Tohe?
Yes, yes, I'm here. This is a pretty tough one. Mr. McNeely, can you tell me just one more thing on if we, if we recommend not to change the zoning? What alternative does the, does the, does the owner have? Just the one extra dwelling? As a, as an, as an ADU or, or not?
Correct, yes. So they, they are currently zoned RS residential, single family. And they can have a primary dwelling on, on this property and an accessory dwelling unit. So two, two dwellings. And I believe that's historically what they had. And by the way, the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation that gets forwarded to, to the board ultimately, as Chair Burton was stating, the Board of Supervisors will make a final decision on the zone change.
Okay. I would probably say I do not, I do not find.
Okay, and can you give a very specific, I need, I need very specific reasons as to why you can't make the findings for the zone change? For the record. Yes, thank you for bringing up the findings of fact.
Thank you, I was trying to find that too. I was looking at scrolling, scrolling. Okay. I think it would be for number, number three, is that three, the change? Let's see.
Number two is public safety. Number three is established character.
Okay, so I have two twos on this slide.
Oh.
Yes, there is no three.
I, I, I think that the third, the, the second two can be a third.
So I would say that part, that it, it would, it would affect.
So you're, so you can't make the findings based on three?
Right.
Okay. All right, and what about the DRO?
That I can probably agree with.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I cannot make the findings to recommend the zone change primarily because I don't. primarily because I don't believe it is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and as far as the DRO goes, I cannot make the findings for basically the same reasons. I, I think a, that, that this would be high-density housing and single-family residential um, against the will of the local neighborhood. And so it would be inconsistent with what the area plan would have wanted to see there.
Okay. Commissioner Walsh.
Well, I am not gonna make the findings for either the zone change or the, um, design review overlay because of the single-family residents. I mean, I realize that we're headed in a direction of higher-density housing everywhere, but hearing the safety concerns um, really, really made me think hard about, um, getting in and out of that canyon. So I'm not gonna make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I also cannot make the findings for the zone change, um, based on, um, the changing of the community character and, uh, I just don't think that this is a good way to go. Um, and I guess the DRO goes hand in hand with that.
Okay. Commissioner Best.
Well, I think that the neighborhood has expressed itself. Um, all the expression was that this is not, um, consistent with neighborhood character. So I would, uh, I cannot make the findings, uh, for either the zone change or the DRO.
Okay, Commissioner Berger.
Um, and listening to everyone else and definitely public health, safety and um, the character and changing the dynamics just don't fit here. So I cannot make the findings for the DRO and nor the, uh, zoning change.
Okay, Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you. I also cannot make the findings for the zoning change or the, the DRO based on the, um, character of the neighborhood that would be affected. And also the public safety does come into play for me also on response time. So I would be no on both zoning change and DRO.
Okay. Um, all right. So I haven't said anything about it yet. So, um, this one I went, I'm, I'm going back and forth, um, to be perfectly honest, because it, it, for me, it's a delicate balance because I do want to take the applicant at their word that they're not turning this into an Airbnb. So I'm not even taking that into consideration. That is removed from my consideration because I don't think that should be considered. Um, even though we know that's what could happen down the road. And yes, Kachina is plagued with a numerous amount of Airbnbs and short-term rentals. Um, I am a resident of Kachina, so I, I, I understand that. Um, I don't necessarily agree that there would be any detriment to public health, safety. Um, because it's only a couple of units, so I really don't consider that to be an issue. Where I am, am running into the issue is the fact that while yes, there are other multifamily, um, zoning in Kachina, they are not here. They are not in this area. So I, I really would love to see that firehouse repurposed, but I, I am hesitant only because there is nothing immediately adjacent that falls in line with that zoning. And the county has made it clear in the past, they don't like spot zoning. And Kachina is riddled with spot zoning and weird, random grandfathered zoning. So, um, I won't be able to make the findings simply because of number three and the fact that there's nothing in the immediate vicinity that would match that. But like I said, this is only a recommendation and the final say does go to the Board of Supervisors. So the applicant can absolutely make their case to the Board of Supervisors. Um, and they, they may decide not to go with the commission. It's happened before. So, um, I can, like, agree with the DRO because it didn't look to me like it was gonna change much from what currently exists. It was gonna basically be the same structure, which is some, instead of garage bays, some doors to dwellings. So for me, that, that's not an issue. Um, it, it's just that spot zoning that I have a problem with. So, all right, so let's do these two separate. Um, I don't want to do these together because there are some people who can make the DRO finding. So I want to go ahead and entertain a motion for the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the zone change.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recommend denying zone change twenty-five dash zero zero two to the Board of Supervisors.
I need a second.
I'll second then.
Okay. So I have a recommendation against the zone change by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Best. Commissioner Tohe. You, you can, you can vote I because it's a recommendation against.
Against. Okay, that was what, that was, I was, I was gonna say.
I figured that, I figured that was the pause.
I'm like, okay, it's late in the day and after a full day of work. Um, all right, uh, I.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Hi.
Commissioner Walsh.
Hi.
Commissioner Williams.
Hi.
Commissioner Best.
Hi.
Commissioner Berger.
Hi.
Commissioner Leslie.
Hi.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote I. Okay, now I need a motion for the DRO. And this one does not go to the Board of Supervisors. This one sticks with us. So, um, if I can get a motion and a second for a recommendation, I, I guessing it's gonna be a recommendation against because I think there's more against the DRO than there are for it. So.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny DRO twenty-five dash zero zero two.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Oh, who got there first?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Leslie. All right. So I have, um, a motion by Vice Chair Wilson to, um, uh, deny the DRO and a second by Commissioner Leslie. Uh, Commissioner Tohe. This is another one of those I situations.
Okay, uh, to deny, right?
To deny. So I, so yes, to deny or nay to, to say that you would approve it.
I'm so confused. All right. Um, okay, um.
If, if you're for the, if you are okay with the DRO, say nay.
Nay. Okay, got it.
Right.
Thank you so much for your understanding. I know what it's about. I just wasn't sure how to vote.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Vice Chair Wilson.
Hi.
All right, Commissioner Walsh.
Hi.
Commissioner Williams.
Hi.
Commissioner Best.
Hi.
Commissioner Berger.
Nay.
Okay, Commissioner Leslie.
Hi.
Okay, and this is Chair Burton. I also vote nay. So that passes for recommending against the, the DRO. So, um, so that motion I guess is denied. Man, this one's a confusing one. Okay. Um, do I need to recap anything, Mr. McNeely? Or, or are we good?
No, I believe we got it.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the last public hearing, um, for the evening, and that is CUP twenty-five zero fourteen. Request for an accessory structure over three thousand square feet.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. In this case is CUP twenty-five zero one four, the Gustafson five thousand square foot accessory structure conditional use permit. The property owner and applicant for this case is Aaron Gustafson, who lives on site. The property is located at six-six-one-two Kelsey Springs Way. That's in the Fort Valley area. And the parcel size of the subject property is two acres. This is in the rural residential zone with a two-acre parcel size minimum. And this request is for the conditional use permit for an accessory structure over three thousand square feet. In this case, five thousand square feet for a garage. Here's a vicinity map. This is the Fort Valley area. So here is Highway one eighty. Uh, to get to the property, you would turn south on Snowball Road from Highway one eighty and then onto Kelsey Springs Way. The property is near the end of Kelsey Springs Way here. And it's surrounded by other properties in the RR two zone. Some are developed with single-family residences and some are not. So there are these properties that are developed, some that are vacant. This property here, I believe there's a house being built currently, uh, but this is the neighborhood. And here is a closer up view of the aerial for the subject property. Off Kelsey Springs Way, there's a gravel driveway to the home. There's a shed here. Uh, the rest of the property, there's no vegetation basically on. Here's a photo of the front of the house from Kelsey Springs Way. And you can see the shed here. And for details on this request, it's that five thousand square foot structure. It's gonna, the applicant's requesting a factory-built garage building. And it would be used for storage of vehicles, trailers and other miscellaneous materials related to the single-family residential use of the property. The dimensions of the proposed structure would be fifty feet wide, a hundred feet long, twenty-eight feet tall. It would have a pitched roof that would have eaves on it. And the applicant is requesting charcoal color for the walls and the roof to be made of a lighter earth tone color. The reasoning for the lighter colored roof would be to reduce thermal expansion and contraction that could lead to roof leaks. Uh, this is a rendering of the proposed structure from two of the elevations. And here's a site plan of the proposed garage. It would be located near the rear of the property, meeting the twenty-foot rear setback, twenty-seven feet from the interior side approximately. It would have a gravel driveway to it as well. This right here is a Wisconsin mound system for the septic. As far as the potential visual impact for, uh, for this request, the subject property is located in an eclectic neighborhood with many large homes and accessory structures. They have various architectural styles. These are just two photos that were taken basically from the subject property that show neighboring homes and accessory structures. They're large, uh, and they have differing architectural styles. This one right here looks actually pretty similar to what the applicant is requesting. So staff does find that the proposed structure is consistent with the existing neighborhood character and doesn't, staff doesn't believe that there would be a negative visual impact. As far as citizen participation, the applicant held a meeting at ten AM on-site on March eighteenth and invited neighbors within five hundred feet of the subject property to comment on the request. Twenty-four neighbors were notified and none attended. The applicant did report that they had some off-the-cuff discussions with neighbors outside of that meeting and they reported that the comments were positive and there were some questions, no negative feedback. Staff also reached out to the same notification area and didn't receive any responses from the neighborhood. As far as compliance with the comprehensive plan, in this case, uh, staff is only able to find two relevant policies from the community character element, one related to private property maintenance. So, uh, with this case, items that would otherwise be stored outside in the open air could be stored inside the accessory structure. There was also a policy about getting input from individual neighborhoods as to what they consider their community character to be. And because staff didn't receive any negative comments about this request, staff assumes that the neighborhood finds that this structure is consistent with the community character for the neighborhood. These are the four required findings of fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to make in order to approve the case. I've detailed responses to this in the staff report and staff is able to make all four findings of fact. So with that, staff makes a recommendation of approval of CUP twenty-five zero one four with the one condition of the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
All right, Vice Chair Wilson.
Mr. Schwartz, one of the comments made by the applicant in his, um, uh, submission said that they would rather build one large building than multiple buildings equal um, to the same total dimensions. Are there any restrictions on the number of buildings that could be placed on this particular property?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Wilson, so there is what we call lot coverage, but it's pretty high. It's thirty-five percent of the lot could be covered with structures.
So that's a lot for. There's not a number of, they could build sixteen buildings if they were three hundred square feet apiece or something.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners for staff? Yep, Commissioner Berger.
Um, if, can you go back to the site plan just real quick? Uh, so to the left, um, I, I'm, I didn't understand exactly what was going on. Is that a proposed septic system or is that already on-site?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Berger, so this already exists and it's hooked up to the home. The applicant doesn't show any, um, any plumbing fixtures that would need to be hooked up to a system.
Okay, just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Hmm.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So is the applicant or the applicant representative, uh, do they wish to make any comments or address the commission at this time?
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, uh, thank you for, you know, working on it and for your time here and appreciate the help.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you state your address for the record really quick?
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, my name's Aaron Gustafson. Address is, uh, this property that you're looking at here, but it's six-six-one-two Kelsey Springs Way and that's our, uh, family's home there.
Thank you. All right, um, if staff don't have, or if the commission doesn't have any questions for the applicant, oh, Vice Chair Wilson.
Mr. Gustafson, um, thank you for your application here tonight. And I was looking at Google Earth. Um, with, uh, the, the garage located where you got it sighted here, it looks to me like it will be directly in the view or in the site, um, path of your neighbor to the west, looking at the mountains, um, a twenty-eight foot tall building. Is that the case?
Uh, no, we, we picked that location on purpose with, uh, input from our neighbor to the west there and, uh, that, their, their view, um, travels, uh, beyond our north property line to capture them. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and open it for public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this case? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open up to commission discussion. Do any of the Commissioners have anything to say? I'm getting crickets again. So, okay, Commissioner Best.
Um, when I first saw this, I was not happy with the color. I, I would much rather see a color that, even though this is a huge structure that blends in a little bit with the view of the mountains. So I drove out there and as it turns out, it's a very popular color out there. Uh, and it just seems to be that this charcoal is everywhere these days, uh, just seeing a lot of. Residential structures go out, go up with this color. So, uh, I. Really can't make an objection. Um, and I can make the findings. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioners? I mean, I kind of get the impression that everybody can make the findings at this point. Is anybody? Not able to make the findings? Okay, well then I, Miss, Commissioner Walsh, you unmuted.
I was ready to make a. Recommendation.
All right. Well, in that case, I will take a motion for approval and a second.
I move to approve, uh, CUP twenty-five oh one four, um, with the conditions below.
Second that.
All right. So I have a motion for approval by Commissioner Walsh and a second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor? Commissioner Tohe?
Hi.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Hi.
Commissioner Walsh.
Hi.
Commissioner Williams.
Hi.
Commissioner Best.
Hi.
Commissioner Berger.
Hi.
Commissioner Leslie.
Hi.
This is Chair Burton. I also vote I. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Um, we have another. Call to the public for items not on the agenda. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, then I am going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is seven fifty-five PM.
I believe you're gonna adjourn the meeting.
Yes. Yeah.
Good catch. Thank you for your time.
It's late.
Everybody needs to eat. We need to go eat.
Thank you all. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Tiana, I have to ask you.
Hi, everyone.
You still there, Tiana?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, you're Tina, you're not.